Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 13th, 2021 meeting of the Leewood Planning Commission. The meeting will come to order and the clerk will call the rule, please.
Commissioner McGurran?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Block?
Absent.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Hunter?
Absent.
Commissioner Belzer?
Here.
Commissioner Hoyt?
Absent.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Elkins?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. We'll begin this evening with a consideration of a motion to suspend the rules to permit one of our commissioners to participate by Zoom call. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move to suspend certain rules of the Planning Commission due to the pandemic.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Are there, is there any discussion? If not, we'll move just to a voice vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules to permit Commissioner Peterson to vote by, or to participate by Zoom and teleconference fashion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the rules are suspended to permit Commissioner Peterson to participate in a teleconference fashion. With that, we find that a quorum is present and we'll move to the business of the evening. Does staff have any modifications to the agenda that was presented to the commission at the end of the week last week?
We do not.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the agenda is approved as it was presented to the commission earlier. Tonight, we call on case number 4920, Cameron's Court, request for approval of a rezoning from AG Agricultural and SDO Planned Office to MXD Mixed-Use Development District Preliminary Plan, Preliminary Platte located south of 133rd Street and west of State Line, and that's under Old Business. As this matter came before the commission, in fact, this is, I think, the third or fourth time that it's come before the commission, but the most recent time was on June 8th, 2021, in which we conducted a public hearing, as well as listened to the presentation of a revised plan by the applicant. Our authority to meet expired and we closed the meeting after having first closed the public hearing. Because we closed the public hearing, we're moving on this evening to the rest of our order for considering applications. I understand that there has been some movement and some modification to the plan since our June 8th meeting. What we'll do this evening is we'll begin by giving the staff an opportunity to summarize just where we stand right now with respect to the application, focusing primarily, if not exclusively, on the additional modifications to the plan that have occurred since our June 8th meeting, and also to address any other issues that staff might have. We'll then give the commission opportunity to question staff around those modifications and issues, and following that, we will give the applicant an opportunity to respond, not only to staff, but to the many comments that we received from the public on June the 8th of 2021. Following that, we'll have an opportunity to ask of the applicant additional questions, which should lead us into a discussion of the plan for case number 4920, and ultimately to a motion and a recommendation of the governing body. Any questions from the commission on my plan to proceed? If not, Mr. Sanchez, I will leave it to you to bring us up to date.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this is case 49-20, Cameron's Court, request for approval of a preliminary plan, Preliminary Platte and rezoning to MXD. I do want to turn your attention to the dais. You will see some additional comments made from the public since the packets were delivered to the commission. In addition, the applicant has provided suggestions for changes to the stipulations in the staff report and in the public works memo. These were the same ones that were emailed to you earlier this morning. So as the chair mentioned, this project was before you on June 8th, 2021, and was continued to tonight's meeting due to time constraints. Since the last Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has made some minor changes to the plan. Number one, the land bank parking has been removed, allowing the project to now meet the regulations of the Leewood Development Ordinance. A note was added to the plan stating that the sidewalks will meet the 135th Street Community Plan where applicable. This would include direction from the 135th Street Community Plan and the fire code. So there are just some areas where it shows it as five feet wide in some areas. Those may be extended up to 12 feet or 16 feet, just kind of depending on the allowability of both the city code, fire code, and what the 135th Street Community Plan says. And all of the buildings along the western boundary of Track 5 have been moved to the east, so that would be kind of where that Kenneth Road connection would be. So all those buildings that were kind of on that western boundary were pushed over to the east or towards State Line Road, and that allowed for the additional saving of trees and the ability for the entry drive along 133rd Street to be moved to the east if necessary. And so the project still consists of 944 dwelling units, 100-unit assisted living facility, and approximately 414,000 square feet of commercial space on approximately 15 acres, or 115 acres. Staff still cannot fully recommend approval for this project since there are still some areas which do not fully meet the intent of the 135th Street Community Plan. And then with regards to the changes to the stipulations that the applicant has provided, staff would like to go over them at this time, if that's okay?
Please.
So we'll go over the planning, the stipulations in the planning staff report first. Stipulation number four from the applicant was deleted. Staff would ask that this stipulation be left in. This talks about being able to comply with 135th Street Community Plan, street designations within the development, including lane width, street accent, sidewalks, et cetera. So that just kind of gives staff more leeway of being able to integrate more items from the 135th Street Plan into the plan submitted. Stipulation number nine, the new number nine in blue, this talks about issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy with each phase of the development, or this talks about the power lines, undergrounding the power lines. Staff would actually like to keep that just the way it is as well. And we actually had it at the time of final occupancy, so if there was a change, we could change it to the time of temporary certificate of occupancy. And then the next stipulation would be number 12 in blue, Section B, regarding the public art impact fee, and staff would be okay with changing that stipulation as the applicant And so the next stipulation would be stipulation number 12 in blue, subsection C, with regards to the street fee. Staff would like to, staff would like to keep this the way it is. We would be able to change it to read for Track 5 adjacent to State Line Road. And stipulation number 12, subsection D, staff would also like to keep that the way it is as well. And so the next one would be stipulation number 29 in blue. Staff would like to keep this the way it is. We would be able to change it to, to read, "The completion of the design and construction of all public improvements for each phase of the traffic study shall be under a single set of construction plans." That would be one that staff would be able to change. The next stipulation would be stipulation number 32 in blue. So stipulation number 32 in blue, and number 36 in blue, and number 37 in blue. Staff would like to keep all of those. And those kind of break things out within the different phases of the development of having to do required things at those times. And normally, staff doesn't write stipulations based on the phasing of a plan, just because the phasing does change and the plat does change from now until the time of final plat, and so we wouldn't want to stick to anything at this point. And I believe that those are all of those within the planning stipulations. Staff does have changes that we would like to address in the public work memo.
This is Brian Scoville, City Engineer. Can you hear me okay? So some of the, reviewing the applicant's suggested changes for the public works memo. Turn your attention to item 2C. One of the issues here is, item 2C is intended to address the public improvements associated with Phase 1 as presented in, or as defined in the traffic study. So the traffic study defines Phase 1 as that area west of the church, east of Pawnee, south of 133rd, and north of 135th. And similarly, item 2D is, we prefer that section address the work associated with Phase 2 as defined by the traffic study. And, you know, it's the traffic improvements associated with those phases. So we would recommend, I do have some possible language to help clarify this item. I can present before you. I typed it up, I just got this typed up at 5:00, so I don't have copies for everyone, but I can get copies. Before I bring that up, I'd just mention the other suggested changes. 135th Street and High Drive, that's item 2C6. And the issue with this is the traffic signal, it's, the signal is warranted by this development. And so the development to the south of 135th, obviously, this developer doesn't have control over when that signal goes in with that development. But if that development south of 135th does not go in, then this development will still need a signal. And so the intent of this language, it may not be very clear, but the intent is such that whoever gets there first between the two developments needs to build the signal. Whoever comes in second will submit an escrow payment to the city, and the city will reimburse the first developer for half of the costs. So we recommend that that language remain as it's written. They do recommend a statement at the end that says, "For either Track 3 or 4," again, we would prefer that this be related or tied to the Phase 1 as defined in the traffic study. So, and then the last, I already mentioned 2D, but the last item is 2D5, related to the 135th Street westbound lanes, and staff recommends keeping that language as written. The traffic study does indicate and recommend three lanes be constructed with and due to this development. It is tied to Phase 2, as the traffic study indicates, it would be related to Phase 2 development. So for that purpose, we recommend including that language, or keeping that language as written. And at this point, I'd like to bring forward that memo. You have copies? Looks like Mark was able to get some copies made, so he's going to distribute those, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, anything else?
That is it for staff.
Okay. Thank you. So for the record, we'll note that the additional comments that were submitted in writing will be added to the record of this case as part of the, as part of the record. We'll also note that the proposed changes to the stipulations and the proposed changes to the public works memo will be added to the record as well. Questions for either of the members of the staff that have commented tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, let's see, I know the, maybe this most recent list of stipulation numbers is the one to refer to, but we, the, in staff's stipulations, could you help me understand or explain the stipulation number seven regarding parking? Is it, it seems as though the revised application, the plan meets the required parking, so I'm confused by what that stipulation seven is.
Sure. And so the previous stipulation number seven did talk about the parking, and that was a carryover from the last meeting. And so at the last meeting, if they were to park all of that land bank parking, they would have been over the Leewood Development Ordinance regulations. So now, they have met that regulation. Staff would be okay with removing that stipulation as the plan now meets it.
So that would be deleting stipulation seven, or in the new, the new list, it's number six, blue?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Other questions for staff? Well, I have a few. I noted that in the, in the presentation that we got from the staff, that there seemed to have been a consensus with respect to what the applicant was intending to do vis-à-vis sidewalk widths, and were intended to bring the sidewalk widths into conformance with the 135th Street Plan. Do you understand, given that, what, what are their concerns with respect to stipulation four?
I think the, the concerns would be that we don't exactly know what the site will look like with this preliminary. There might be options to plant trees, you know, sometimes you'll get a little cut out of a concrete block and then you'll see a tree there. So that might happen in a couple locations. There may be opportunities for green space in some, so at this point, it is a little flexible right now for the preliminary. Landscaping really isn't reviewed until the time of final, and so that would be the next appropriate time to review the landscaping. So that kind of ties into the sidewalks.
I'm sorry, I meant old number four. The stipulation numbers are about, doesn't have anything to do with landscaping.
Oh, okay.
But that's, that's the one that, that you all want and they want completely gone, and I'm curious as to your understanding of where the disagreement is. I thought it was sidewalks at first, but sidewalks apparently have been resolved, right?
The sidewalks somewhat have been resolved until we really see it on a plan. We're not quite sure how they intend on meeting the 135th Street Community Plan, and so not only is it the sidewalks, but there are bike lanes shown, there are trash receptacles that are shown in the 135th Street Community Plan. So there are multiple items that are shown on the 135th Street Community Plan that staff would just need more detail on.
Do they show up in this plan right now?
They do not show up in this plan, and that'd be something that we can talk with the applicant at, you know, between now and the time of final for showing that at final.
Okay. And then going down to blue stipulation number nine, concerning the power lines, again, there's some words here, but can you explain to us at a practical level, what, what's the difference between the wording that you want and the wording that the applicant wants?
So the applicant has said that they want to remove the final occupancy of any building, where, and the addition of issuing temporary certificate of occupancy with each phase of the development. Staff would actually like to keep that in so that there isn't one part of the development that's being constructed and there's another part being left out, and no public improvements are happening on that area. And so that would be the undergrounding of the power lines, and there are only, there's only one area on the entire site that has the power lines over them right now, and that's along State Line Road. This also talks about the construction of new power lines, and so we would still want all new power lines to be undergrounded, and so no temporary, you know, well, we're going to put this up right now until the next phase, and we would still want the new ones to be undergrounded.
So what staff's recommending, make sure I get this correct, is this, this project phases basically from west to east, and what you would say is that the power lines on the far east side would need to be undergrounded before we gave a certificate of occupancy on any of the buildings on the far west phase, correct?
And I think staff would be okay with segmenting Track 5 as it's shown on the plans. That is the commercial side of it, the one closest to State Line, and saying that that could happen on its own.
But is that, is there, is there anything, are there any existing power lines other than on Track 5?
There are not.
So, so you're saying that staff would be amenable to a modification of this stipulation, then?
Yes, for any development within Track 5. So as soon as any part of Track 5 would come in, we would want those power lines undergrounded.
Well, you and Mr. Klein may want to work on some language during the next few minutes if we're going to do that, because I suspect that, at the very least, the applicant's going to want to do that. So same, same question I have with respect to stipulation blue 12, what is the practical difference of these words? What, what is it that you want versus what is it that the applicant wants?
So for stipulation number 12, Section B, we're okay with that one. They added "for non-residential development." The public art impact fee is only done for non-residential development, and so we're okay with the added language of that.
Okay. C and D.
Subsection C talks about the street fee and how it is done for each phase of the development. I think that we would be okay, again, with doing for just Track 5 adjacent to State Line Road, as that would be the only area where the city would be collecting the street fee as along State Line Road.
So there would be no, no collection of a street fee for any of the first four phases?
That is correct.
Okay. And same thing with D?
So subsection D gets a little tricky, and the applicant may be able to give some feedback on this, too. They added the word "finished," square foot of finished retail building area and square foot of finished office slash non-retail building. So the way that the ordinance reads for the 135th Street Corridor Impact Fee is, it actually defines what a finished floor area is or finished square footage, and it kind of calculate, it kind of indicates that it is the gross square footage of that building. And so we would want to communicate that with the applicant to make sure that we're both talking about the same thing, as sometimes finished floor area does not include hallways, stairways, things of that nature, where the way that it is defined within the ordinance would include all of that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Peterson.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
Since we are, we're on old stipulation 13, now, I guess, blue 12. I went through, and I had, I've never done this before, but I went through and actually calculated out the, the impact phase relative to this. I understand where, like, for example, the change to, let me see it here. The change to the, the new 12, blue 12B, formerly 13B, for non-residential, because that is just really a clarification, that was pretty straightforward. In C, for the street fee, for the street fee, it wasn't clearly indicated, but what I did is I calculated, so the $391.50 per linear foot, based upon the, the architectural diagrams, it appears to be it's over 2,500 linear feet, which would be almost $1 million in an impact fit. So as I understand that, the, the change here, so if the part of State Line, the, the phase, I believe it is phase, let me go back here. Phase 5, and then phase 6, phase 6 is the other portion of the State Line. So is the applicant therefore asking that only part of that fee be applied to phase 5, and the other portion be applied to phase 6 as they develop it?
And that might be a better question for the applicant. The way that staff would want it read is for Track 5, and so there is a difference between the tracks and the phases. The phases don't necessarily meet up with the tracks, and so staff would recommend that it read for Track 5.
Okay, so in, in essence, you know, if, when I look at, it's on the document of the, the PECA document, page 6 of the staff's report, we have the maps of the phases. If you look at the difference between Phase 5 and Phase 6, clearly, Phase 5 represents probably 75 to 80% of the development of Track 5. So I would tend to agree with staff that that should just remain as is in the entire Track 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. And then looking at, rather than go through each one of them, there's this, seems to be this difference of opinion about whether something should be tied to phasing or whatnot in the latter stipulations, but let's go to stipulation number 37. Where, what is the difference of opinion between staff and the applicant with respect to 37? Man, you've told me what the words are, but what are the practical differences?
This is Marcy Knight with Legal.
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
On stipulation blue 37, I think Mr. Sanchez addressed that with regard to, like, blue 36 and blue 32, there's this reference for each phase of the development, and he can expand more on that, but that kind of gets tricky when phases may change, and because it was mentioned in 37, and that was kind of grouped in with that. But city staff has other issues with blue 37. Some of the language we could agree to, but it's really just kind of rewording it. I don't know that it's all that helpful. I think Mr. Holland has talked about this one multiple times in the past, about how he does not like the joint and sever liability. The city would ask that the commission leave that in, and that's why we would ask that it just remain as it was prior to Mr. Holland's edits. But essentially, as I think we've talked about in other meetings, the joint and several liability is pretty common. The stipulation has been in many, many, I think for decades perhaps, other developments and recorded, and I don't know that it's ever been an issue. I know other attorneys and developers have, have agreed to it. But this just leaves options open for the city in the event we are to where we are paying for improvements in these developments. It allows us, if you've got, say, 50 homeowners, you've got 45 present and five are AWOL, it allows the city to collect against the 45 that are there. And it's up to those 45 to find the other five if they want a cost share. So it kind of takes that burden off the city to recover all of its costs. We can recover against who is here. So we would ask that that remain as drafted.
So, Ms. Knight, how, how does this issue then relate to, pardon me, the, the, what I'll call the far east part of the development versus the far, the west part of the development? So if, if there is a, if there is a problem with the commercial development, the owners of the duplexes on phase one could be held liable if they were there and, and the, the commercial folks were not there?
And that might go back to number blue 32, and I know the city staff does want that to remain as is, because this is supposed to be one development. That's why they're rezoning the entire tract, and it's not five developments, it's one development. But I suppose the commission could separate the residential from the commercial in that regard. But I think that this is one proposed development, and it's supposed to be, what are the words? You know, walkable and connected and, and not five separate.
A mixed-use development.
Yes, so it's one development, so there should be a way to cost share across the entire development.
But again, at the bottom line, if, if, if for some reason, the, the the work that needs to be done, the improvements and whatnot that need to be done in the commercial space don't get done, then, under, under the stipulation that staff would have it, it would give this, it would give the city the opportunity to collect that from the residential folks on the west end.
And perhaps there's a way that they could draft this declaration that provides the funding mechanism to split that up, and maybe that's something that could be looked at, at final.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. I mean, I'm not trying to, I guess I am trying to box you in, but I'm, I'm trying to understand, am I thinking of this correctly in terms of the, the cross encumbrances, if you will, or cross? They're not encumbrances, I don't mean that in legal fashion, but the cross burdens across all of this development from the west side, which is primarily residential, to the east side, which is primarily commercial?
And I would have to look at how some other mixed-use developments have worded that, where you do have commercial and residential together in the same development. So I don't know how that would be worded, but, you know, they've been calling this horizontal mixed use from the beginning. So if it's vertical mixed use, would you split that between residential and commercial? I don't, I don't know. I mean, we could look at other developments for examples of that. But I, I think typically in a mixed use, it would be all owners.
All for one and one for all.
All for one and one for all.
And, and that's fine. Like I said, I'm not being critical of it, I just want to make sure we understand it correctly. Mr. Klein, you look like you would like to say something.
And I believe Ms., Ms. Knight is absolutely right. Actually, Park Place, if you look at it, it is horizontally integrated as far as the residential and the commercial portions of it. And I believe we had the same stipulation applied to it as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. I think those are the questions that I had for the staff. Any further questions for staff? Well, if not, I don't see on my monitor, Mr. Odo, but I assume, Mr. Odo, you're, you're out there someplace?
I am, I am.
There we see you. Thank you. Welcome to the commission. If you could begin, as always, by giving us your name and your address, although we know you will, it would help our record, please.
You got it. I'm Rick Odo, President of Odo Development, and our address is 15200 West 135th Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas, 66219. However, I am a resident of Leewood and proud of that. I really want to thank you for all the time and consideration that staff and planning commission has put into this, because the questions I'm hearing are hitting the, the nail on the head. And I'm gonna let Kurt, our attorney, get to the, some of the stipulations. But Chairman, you were right spot on. Our issue is residential shouldn't be encumbered by some of the commercial, especially when we're having so many of the, so many of these homes for sale. You certainly don't want to encumber for-sale lots to be, that's why we said something about phasing, because we're real concerned about all the pha, the for-sale product, the duplexes, the brownstones, that they're not gonna like buying, being responsible for, uh, you know, a retail shop or an office, but so it concerns me. You're spot on on some of those. I also heard a lot of movement from staff from where we were, trying to define when these things start, like the, uh, uh, street light, or the third lane, well, go back to the main one, is, uh, we're okay with the starting of phase, our phase five or six, the tract five, any part of tract five on State Line gets started, then we pay for that fee, as, as Commissioner Peterson said. We're happy with something like that. That was our intent. What we don't want to do is start the duplexes up on phase one. It won't even have a connecting street with Chadwick or High Drive down to 135th Street to want it to have to pay for the streetlights at, uh, down there, I believe it's High Drive. We're happy to, on any additional phasing, any other phasing, what we're showing is phase one, that creates the building, when we build, uh, High Drive, then pay for that part of the, uh, of the streetlights. So I think there's a lot of movement. I'm gonna let Kurt follow up with that more. He'll explain it certainly better than I did. But I think we're moving in the right direction, and I know there's some real issues with that number four that we took out, because the guidelines of 136th Street Corridor aren't codified, and there's a lot to say we're gonna meet them all, when in the staff report says, you, you, you know, I'll read it later, you can't, because there's parts of the 135th Street Corridor Plan that are in opposition to a hun, of your LDOs. So that's why we wanted that removed, is for a very important reason. And then the rest on the square footage of the spaces, I think our terminologies were clarifying, but what you're asking for is what we're trying to get to. So I think we're really close on those stipulations. So let me get back to what I, I want to talk about, the minor changes that we've had, and how far we've come on all this. So if I can ask Patrick to put up the screen or small slideshow, this won't take long, guys, I promise you. We've been doing this for a long time here. You guys know, know the place, know Cameron's Court, you know where it is. As we stated before, we did remove, as staff said, we removed some of the deferred parking and added parking where they'd asked us to, and we're 100% in line with the LDO. If you look where the red clouded area is, we moved those buildings 72 feet to the east. When we did that, we removed the deferred parking that was there, and we allowed for four and a half acres of additional trees, not total, additional trees of forest area to be saved. And we still have tree, uh, the forest area on the, at 133rd, right where you were, Patrick. Show back where you were, up at 133rd Kenneth. Yeah, right there, we still have all those trees there, protect the neighborhood to the north. And we have the park area to the right there, to there, and down to your right, right there. That's a large park area, a lot of trees, we saved those. And then the ones over on Chadwick, where we have the big 80-inch and 60-inch oak trees, we removed that building there to save more trees there. So we've done a lot to save more trees and not impact, and all, we basically took it out of excess parking that we didn't feel that we needed. So I think that's good for everybody. Next. Okay, this is a picture, by the way, coming off 134th Street, looking west. We did, I do want to state that we removed the erroneous note from previous notes about the duplexes for rent. Don't know how that was on there. Even though HUD doesn't allow you to distinguish between for-sale or for rent, we are making those all for-sale on the, the first phase duplexes. Like I said before, there'll be $650,000 to $700,000 per side, which would be a really fantastic asset to the area, and within your MXD code. The sidewalks, I, the issue we had before was putting 16-foot sidewalks everywhere was going to exceed the 30-foot maximum from the, from the, uh, street. The fire code only allows you to do 30 feet, and when you had parallel parking, a green space sidewalk, it got more than 30 feet. So that's why we wanted to keep the, uh, we wanted to stay, you know, be, be more flexible on the sidewalk, 12 to 16 feet. We're in conform, staff and I now are in agreement with what we're trying to do, so we should be in good shape on that. Go ahead to the next. This is just a picture we took for you guys. You can see how we meet the, uh, Main Street fill. This is standing at the corner of Kenneth Loop, looking south towards the grocery store in 135th Street. And the other one is standing at the loop, looking west towards, at the end there is a senior living facility, or, but if you notice, the streetscape there is very similar to Chadwick, where you've got parallel parking, you've got a treescape in the middle there, big median in the middle. Then you've got retail on both sides, on the corners, and you've got more brownstones between it and the senior living to the back. So you've got a great livable space right here, and if you look to your left, you, you're back on to, going, going back down, looking south down Kenneth Loop. You can see that we have two- and three-story office buildings. Most, a lot of them have retail on first floor. I mean, you can't ask for more of a city's, uh, Main Street fill than what you're seeing right here. And going to the next picture. And this is how the grocery store will look. There's a lot of question of that. Now that you can see it, you've got parking, you've got the fire, the street, the loop going through there, and by fire code, you have to have street in front of the parking, in front of the, uh, in front, in front of the marketplace, the gro, the grocery store, sorry. A little nervous sometimes, even I do. So we've got the grocery store here. I think it looks very nice. And the other thing, I'm just, because it was brought up last time about the, uh, how we meet the, uh, Main Street fill. To the right is Mission Corners, what we were asked to mimic, which has the Main Street coming in off in the middle. Like, we have the Main Street buildings, uh, kind of in the back. And we, the original plan, we had all of our retail and office right on State Line, but staff had asked us to pull it off of State Line and put it on the Kenneth Loop, so that street would have the Main Street fill. And we were happy to do that. So we're in really good shape there. I, I'm sorry, I, okay, right. So I think we're in agreement with the placement of the, of the buildings, both staff and I, everybody is. The other thing is, the last thing is the trees. The, that stipulation, we, we're working out. We're gonna push that off to final. Both staff and, and us agree with that. And the number one reason is, as we said before, if we just simply put in the required streets, sidewalks, and attention ponds, we couldn't, with the number of trees we had to replace on it, we couldn't even fit on the site. So something's wrong with the LDO, the code. It wasn't intended to make this unbuildable. So I believe next planning commission, you guys have before you a brand-new code that should address this, that we will meet. And we're not the only ones having the issue. Several of the other developers of other land tracts will have the same or worse issues. So this is why they're gonna change that, and I appreciate their working with us so much. So we're in agreement with parking, with the saving more, uh, that was one of the requests, saving more trees, which we did. So go to the next page here. So the only thing that we aren't in, in agreement with based upon the staff's last report is that they'd like to see us have more retail on the west side. The, uh, they still like to see more on the west side, even though we don't feel there's a need for it. The city's own market study says there's very limited need for retail. The, uh, the market study that Rainier did from RCL also said there's very little retail, and what retail we should have should be on major corners, major corners, Mission and State Line. We can maybe squeeze a little bit in on Pawnee. We did. We put a little bit in Chadwick. But you don't want to put very much retail on side streets, and Chadwick and Pawnee are side streets, and they're not gonna be where you'd put more retail. You know, the code says that you should, you should have 5% of retail. We have 6.8. So we exceed the code. We're in good shape there. But there's nothing in the code or statute that states that it'll be a distribution requirement. But we do have it distributed throughout. So to ask for more, in my mind, isn't fair and reasonable when there's not a need for more retail. We're already at 100,000 square feet of retail with as much vacancy there is around it. I really don't think there's a need for more retail. The other item I should note is, if you see there in yellow, your own guidelines on page 56 state, for the success of both the node and the corridor as a whole, the city should work with property owners and developers to determine the most optimal locations of these places. The other part is, it says, "The location of the node model is flexible within the corridor. The precise location of each node may vary based on the actions of the marketplace and the response to the evolving development efforts." So the way I read that is that it says the city should work with us. We should put it where it's going to be successful, not where somebody thinks it should just go because we want more there. Without a reason behind it, doesn't sound logical and is not prudent to do. It would be dangerous to put excess retail on side streets where we think they're gonna be vacant. Then that sends a really bad message that the place isn't successful. We want to be successful. So we've placed most of retail on State Line in the high-traffic areas. We put limited, the, a limited amount of retail on the side streets like Pawnee and very little Chadwick. Any more would not be prudent. So I don't think it's fair for the staff to ask for more retail on the western side of the property. The community needs to be healthy and sustainable community, and there's no ordinance that requires more retail on the west side, nor is there a need. And so a request, to make a request without market need, demand is not fair. And therefore, I don't think should ever, it should be denied, because we don't have more like the staff asked for. The other item is that the staff is asking us to do, and it's, what they've asked us to do is put more parking garages in over on the State Line area, mainly of all, and I don't even understand it. They've asked for us to put part, additional parking garages on the east portion of the community in front of the grocery store and one of the office buildings. And they said in their staff report that, um, uh, well, I'm gonna get to that. Uh, you know, there's nothing in the LDO or guidelines that require parking structures. I, I can't stress that enough. It just simply says they're allowed, not that they're required. So it, to me, it doesn't make logical sense to even ask for more, or to ask for parking garages. Don't forget, we have them underneath several of the, of the apartment buildings. We have them under the lift work buildings. We have them under the senior living building. So we have a lot of structured parking, but we're using grade to help us on those issues and build it into the side of the, side of the hills. And so they're hidden, instead of just building flat-up structures. And we also already have 35% green space. Code says you have to have a minimum of 30. We're at 35. So we don't need to save, conserve space for parking garages. And I want to stress that, uh, how expensive parking garages are. Parking garages cost about $30,000 a stall compared to surface parking of 2,500. So what does that mean to rent? Will you be adding about $20 to $25 a square foot of additional rent to the different retail stores or the grocery store? Can you imagine a grocery store who's normally paying $14 to $18 a square foot, now paying $30 to $43 a square foot? You wouldn't have any takers. Retail would go from 45, 40 to $45. You had a, a parking garage, now goes to 60 to 70. No retailer will do this. That's why, it's one of the several reasons that parking garages kill, uh, retail. Shoppers don't like it because they're not convenient. No one likes driving around. No one likes driving around, driving around, driving around, looking for a parking spot versus in an open parking, you just see it, oh, you drive right to it, you can see where the open stalls are. You can't find it. Plus, one of their comments in the staff report was um, I'm gonna make sure I got it straight. Staff thinks the parking garage would allow for buildings to stay closer together. Building a parking garage is not gonna change the location of buildings. It might change parking, but it's not gonna change the buildings, so the buildings are still gonna be the same distance apart. The other thing says that parking garages deter further interaction between pedestrians and vehicles. I don't think anybody thinks that parking garages deter uh, pedestrian interactions where I think they make them worse. I know I've nearly been hit by people turning the corner, making turns in parking garages. I don't like them. I don't think that many shoppers like parking garages unless you have to in a dense area like downtown or the plaza where you have to. On the suburbs, there's no need to. Um, this is probably why you guys just approved a three story building, I believe, last session for K B R, they're on state line for a hundred and nineteen thousand square feet and I could be wrong, but I don't think it required parking garages there, you're letting them do all surface parking for the same reason. They don't wanna pay another twenty dollars a square foot and actually parking garage from state line doesn't look very pretty. So I would really recommend against it. And I wanna read one more part of your codes on page sixty-four. Parking in lots in and around the corridor should not only be efficient, but also accommodating for pedestrian living, shopping and dining in the area. In my opinion, parking garages are not accommodating for pedestrians. I think they're dangerous for pedestrians, shoppers don't like them, retailers don't like them, and they are not easy to park in and move around. So my opinion, uh, I don't even think that parking garage just meets your guidelines of accommodating. So anyway, once again, parking garages are not required. They are however, um, allowed. We don't need them. If there's not a need for it and they're not required, I think it's an unreasonable request from staff to ask us or say it is one of the two reasons that they're denying it. Um, it's because we don't have parking garages. So um, with this, as you know, there's a huge need for the product. We have the demand and we can get started. I do wanna turn this over to uh, Kurt to talk about some of the other issues we've got um, and the stipulations where I think we're much closer on. So Kurt, you there?
Mr. Odo, Mr. Odo, before, before you defer to Mr. Holland, I guess I'd like to give you an opportunity, you know, the last meeting that we had, we had several hours of commentary by and, and concern expressed by the public. Um, and, and one of the things that I mentioned at the time that we susta- that we uh, continued the meeting was that you would have an opportunity to respond to those concerns. Would you care to take a few minutes and, and address, because so far you, you've, you've done a great job of addressing the changes to the plan uh, that have happened since the last time, but I really haven't heard much in the way of, of a rebuttal to the concerns that the public expressed in their last, uh, their last opportunity. So I, I wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to do that, um, as well as, as some of us may have some questions for you on those broader issues before we get to the details from uh, Mr. Holland.
You got it. Well, if I remember right, the number one concern that everybody has is traffic. And anytime you take a hundred and fourteen acres and develop it, I'm not gonna lie to you, you're gonna add a little bit of traffic. But keep in mind, we're doing this at half the allowable density that's allowed. So I don't think you can do it for any less. As you know, we had our traffic's report done, staff uh, approved it, your, your internal staff looked at it and then they sent it over to Olson and they also agreed with it that the levels of service are going to stay the same as they are now. And the reason being is we've got traffic coming and going at different times. Most of it is the uh, uh, residential. And the residential is going to be going out, yes, a thousand, eight hundred units, thousand units, something like that over the next ten years. And out ten different openings, going four different directions, that's one car on average per entrance exit, that's next to nothing in a parking, in a traffic study. I know that, I've studied this. You guys know that from common sense that, you know, uh, over a mile long property, out ten different exits, it's not gonna cause that much of an issue. The second issue people brought up with schools, you saw from the past that the city, the school, this property's gonna create about ten million dollars of property tax, about four, five of it's gonna go to the public, to the school district. And they feel they can handle the ten to twelve students that this will add because they're only at seventy-five percent occupancy. There's not an issue there. The other concern is uh, you know, what about the park situation? Well, one, Giza Park was designed to handle that this was gonna be built with, this was gonna be built out and it would be for them as well, not just existing residents to be allowed to use Giza Park, that Giza Park was designed to use, to have this built out and that it would be mostly residential and that they would use it. However, we're, we've got acres upon acres of park space in here. We've got bike trails all around it. And staff now agrees that we have bike trails already existing in front of it, built through the code that they were wanting. So that's why that's not discussed anymore. So we will make internal length. We are working, we worked with them on uh, uh, sidewalks everywhere. We've already shown you that picture of the cross connects. We've got a really cool loop that goes all the way around the church or in the trees, meandering through that, would be a beautiful park situation for everybody. So I think that we're in pretty good shit. Uh, the other thing that people brought up was, well, what about Chadwick uh, Park? If it's successful, will it bring traffic? Well, that's the goal, is to have the residents of Leewood enjoy this. However, we've got so much city park, there's so much street parking that isn't marked, we feel that you'll be able to use the existing parking uh, stalls, the parking lots and on-street parking that we should not have any problems with it. Uh, and if it's so successful, like it is at some of the other communities, then we'll be able to park over on the state line and have buses uh, bring them back and forth or maybe work something out with the uh, retail community to our west uh, on parking over there. But I think, well, we don't plan to have stuff that big. We'll be able to handle it internally. Um, and then the last issue is, I, I believe was property values. Johnson County Appraisers would tell you, there's not a single A property, let alone A plus plus property like this, that's ever been built that the home values went down because of it. Uh, act- it's the unknown that causes uh, property values to go down, not an A plus property. The traffic on this is not gonna be that great. Most of the traffic, we did it on purpose, is pushed to state line into a hundred and thirty-fifth street on purpose, so it doesn't impact the neighborhood very much. Uh, property values, like when we did Villa Milano, the Tuscany values did not go down, they continue to go up. When what Mission One O Six was built, those property homes over there are still continuing to sky rise. Uh, everywhere you've built these things, property values continue to go up. So it's not a deterrent to any, any property owners to buy or be able to sell their homes. Um, I think that was the major issues, unless there was other questions or things that I should uh, bring, uh, discuss or answer, I don't, this, um, I don't think there was really anything else. Was there?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Odo. Before we get to the nitty and the gritty of the stipulations, I'm gonna give the staff, or I'm gonna give, give the commission an opportunity to ask any questions that they might have of you regarding these, these more general broad topics that you just touched on.
Okay.
Does anybody from the commission have questions for Mr. Odo?
Question?
Yes, Commissioner Belzer.
Mr. Odo, can you talk about the units that are for ownership versus the units that are for rentals?
Um, yeah, we are planning to have the duplexes along uh, one hundred and thirty-third uh, be for sale. All the brownstones, and I believe there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight buildings that are for sale. So that'll be about a hundred units of those. I think we got fifty some odd duplex sides would be for sale. Um, and then we'll probably do the live work buildings, uh, the units o- on the top, above the office space, uh, like the, the Mission uh, One O Six will probably be condos for sale as well. So we've got for sale products scattered throughout the entire community, um, as well as rental throughout the entire community. But I can tell you that the rental units, you know, you've got, the penthouses will be starting at thirty-five hundred dollars to four thousand dollars a month. One bedrooms here will be starting around sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars a month, two bedrooms starting around twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars. When they're, when we're getting rents like that and we do get them already and there's zero vacancy along the one hundred and thirty-fifth street, then the rental side will maintain the property to an A plus plus property because the renters, customers there will demand it. Uh, for the for sale product, we're gonna have a homeowner association set up that'll be maintenance provided on the, on everything for them so that we know that their homes will be maintained along with their yards will be maintained. Is that what you were talking about?
Yes. Are you saying that all the duplexes along one hundred and thirty-third street that back to the neighborhoods will all be for sale?
Uh, we're definitely doing the first phase. Uh, uh, those will definitely all be for sale. Second phase, we'll see how that goes, uh, but that's our intent.
Okay, so I, I, when I'm reading the public comments or I'm hearing the public speaking um, and their comments, that's one of the biggest issues that I am continuously hearing from the public that um, it seems that the feeling that most of the residents is that the development that's majority rental um, seems to be more temporary. It doesn't really foster the, a community, a long-term community sense where people are buying a home and staying and building a community, raising their families here and being part of the long-term community as they are across the street and in surrounding areas. I, I feel that that's a big piece that the residents are, are really looking for, the residents that are currently in the surrounding areas. And with, there's, there's zero single family homes in this development, which I also hear the residents, the current residents of the neighboring um, areas constantly reinforcing the fact that there's no single family homes. And I think it, I think, I'm, I, I don't feel that, just personally, I don't, I don't hear you addressing that in the way that the neighbors are, are asking for it.
Well, I'm gonna stress a couple of things here. One, I disagree with their statements wholeheartedly. I think renters are just as good as people as force, uh, people who own their own homes. I think properties that are A plus properties, that even if these duplexes were for, for leased, they'd be at five thousand, six thousand dollars a month and they're gonna be well-maintained. Um, you, I mean, our intent, like I said, is to make these things for sale. So I did, that, once again, I disagree with their belief that people who own homes make better neighbors than those who don't. I can tell you, over Villa Milano, we've got people been there since day one, they're still there and it will still continue to be there, I hope, as long as their health hold, holds out for another five or ten years. People do this by choice. There's a lot of seniors that are fifty-five, sixty years old who sell their homes, who wants to live in the neighborhood and want to rent and make great neighbors. Um, so I really can't disagree enough with, with them. Your second part about single family, you're, we were asked to remove the RP two code, uh, re- resection of it. And a single family requires a little bit more of a front yard and backyard setbacks than what we can get in with the grid system. So when I was asked to put the grid system in, required to put the grid system in, it doesn't allow us to put single family. Second, single family can be back up to uh, to apartments very easily and it happens all the time without issue. But I haven't seen a good uh, plan where you have apartments on one side of the street facing the front yard, the front of the house of the apartment typically. Proper zoning, one-on-one has you going from RP three of the apartments or RP four of the apartments to RP two of a duplex to, like we have now, to RP one on the other side. So we're following proper downzoning procedures that you would do in any community. And I, I real- really don't think it's fair that, well, one, the, the people across the street feel that there should be single family there and I don't understand that because they don't wanna be next to apartments, but they want someone else to buy a single family house across the street that'll be right across the street from, from an RP four and I, or apartment building. I don't, don't think that sounds fair or right. I don't have enough mass to build single families now because in the, instead of having twenty, and I could be off on the numbers, so twenty-six duplexes, I have twenty-six single families. And once again, I don't have the setbacks to allow for a proper yard for a single family, but I don't have enough mass there. And from the backyard, you can't tell if a duplex is a duplex or a single family, the way we make them look. Uh, so I think that the residents are worried about something that isn't really in the issue. And once again, I will stress, you know, HUD's concern that uh, we're not allowed to distinguish or not approve or deny or, or something based upon rental factors versus for sale factors. Um, so, you know, I don't think the neighbors are being very fair with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. Other questions for uh, Mr. Odo? Mr. Odo, I, I just wanna follow up a little bit on, on the, the comment that you made and make sure that I understand. So, so what I understood you to say is that the reason that we lost the, the two rows of single family uh, residential on the north side of the development was because of the, the city's insistence on the grid uh, street structure?
Yes. We had it carved off as its own whole area, neighborhood over there on the northwest corner and when we went to a grid system, it didn't allow for it.
And I guess what I, what I guess I'm not quite following is, you've still got a hundred and thirty-third terrace there that looks to me very similar to the way it looked when you had single family residences there. What, what was it about the grid system that, that caused you to uh, to need to drop back from the uh, single family residential to, to the duplexes?
Well, one of the things is the removal of RP two. We couldn't put RP two and they wanted it all to be M X D. M X D lunch, once, it says in the code should be four units to the acre. And we don't think you wanna put single family at four units to the acre. That's why we had it before as an RP two, as its own carve-out. The other thing, it doesn't allow us to put the two buildings that we've got uh, in your section of T four, five and six, like your grid plan shows. I said yours, I'm referring to the city. So we're following the grid plan the way it was designed and RP one, RP two really isn't able to fit in on these street grids.
Cap, thank you.
And I, if, if the, if Clover wants to pitch in or if I explain that right, um, that's fine too.
The, the other question that I had for you was, you mentioned a couple of times that, that your, the density that you have is actually less than one-half or at one-half of what's required. Uh, I guess I'm curious i- if we were to um, to not consider track five and looked at just tracks one through four, how would that impact your density calculation?
You know, that is an aw- that's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. Um, okay, so first of all, we're, we're, it's not required, it's that the maximum is fifteen units and then you do have certain parts of the city where you're allowed to go up to nineteen. But in this area, M X D's allowed to have fifteen units to the acre and we're running the eight point six units to the acre, so about half the required or the allowed, it's the allowed density. Um, we are meeting the required retail, uh, the, that's where you have the minimums that we were talking about, so just from wording. As far as the density, um, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Clover, isn't it uh, are we eleven point two units to the acre?
A little, where are my math? Oh, on the west side. On the west, are you asking on the west side, Rick?
Yes, on the west side. We just had that, we did the math last and I think we're eleven point two and RP four allows for twelve. Just like, if I remember right, that's what it was for uh, for Villa Milano. And Villa Milano was right at eleven as well.
You're doing a quick cipher. Yeah, I think you're, I think you're close.
We might be off one decimal point, but the intent there is we were, Villa Milano's at eleven, uh, we're allowed twelve and I think we're eleven point two on the west end, uh, if we just took it by itself.
Yeah, eleven point six, that's what I'm getting, quick math.
Eleven point six, but code's twelve. So we- Eleven-point-six, but code's twelve, so we would have made it, we'd meet it either way.
All right, thank you, Mr. Odo, I appreciate that. Any other questions for, for Mr. Odo at this point? If not, Mr. Odo, I'll let you defer to Mr. Holland, and we'll talk about stipulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank, so, so thank you, Curtis Holland here with Paul Smalley, uh, counsel for the developer. Um, first, appreciate being here again tonight to the sports project and to specifically speak about or talk, talk about the stipulations. I would say that before, before the meeting tonight, I got a call from Mark Klein, and, and we worked through some of these issues, um, already, um, much of which was along the discussions that I heard earlier tonight, um, with respect to phasing and when we might do certain things. Uh, I was trying to clarify with some of these changes, when that might occur, but I wanted to go specifically to a couple of these as we talked through them and kind of bring it back to where we were earlier in, in the evening. And, uh, we'll start out with the, uh, planning, uh, planning staff stipulations or, uh, draft stipulations. Uh, and number four, which we, we've already talked about, but that's the one we struck through, and just to, to the point that was made, I think, by you, Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we want to end up with an approved plan that's nearly identical to what we are presenting to you tonight. Um, and we don't want to have a stipulation that would somehow, uh, require us to update that, change that plan that you guys, uh, will consider and, and hopefully have approved, approve it. Um, so that's number one. We don't, we don't want to have to futz around with making substantial changes. I mean, we, we understand there's going to be some tweaks here and there, but, but we don't want any wholesale changes of what we're showing, uh, assuming or if it gets approved. Um, that's one point. The other point is, and I think it was made by others, that, you know, compliance with the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan, but the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan is not the LDO, it's not an ordinance, it's not the code. And, and so, and, and if you go through the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan, obviously, there's, subject to a lot of interpretation, so there's a lot of subjectivity and, um, i- 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 vagueness, if you will. It, it isn't specifically clear in many, many instances, and so we wanted to avoid that. Some of the things that Mr. Sanchez was talking about, you know, in terms of trying to find a spot for a tree, yeah, yeah, we can work through those kinds of things, but, um, I think at the end of the day, we want to have the plan that's presented to you approved in the fashion, form that it is, and not have to worry about updating it to comply with something that we don't, one's not code, and two, it is subject to so many different, uh, subjective interpretations. So that's, that's the reason we didn't like four. I think you all hit on that. Um, I guess, uh, we can talk about what was, uh, the old number ten or, or new number nine, blue nine, um, which, and I think what I heard tonight with respect to the power lines, the whole goal there was to try to phase in the burying of the power lines for, and I think, I think I heard that, that we would agree to do that, or staff is willing to have that be done with the base five next to State Line Road.
Track five.
Track five, I'm sorry, track five. And, and we're okay with that. That was the intention there. All, all the other utility lines will be buried as we go forward, uh, for, for each, each portion of the development. Um, go to, uh, blue twelve, or old, what was old thirteen, uh, I understand that staff's okay with the change maybe to B, uh, to include the term or red, uh, words for non-residential development, because that is what's in the code. Um, I think I heard some, uh, agreement on C for the street fee, that that would be paid.
With track five.
With track, with track five, since it's the only one, or there's track five or base five and, well, track five, it was called track five. The, the part that's next to that State Line Road, we're good with that. Uh, D, uh, the, I added the term finished, I, I, I indicated Mark, that, that's what the, the language within the ordinance uses, the term finished, best say floor area, and, and I use the word finished just to try to clarify that that's what that was meant. But our goal, our intent here wasn't to change the code, we're, we're willing to agree and abide by whatever the code is. So I think we're in agreement with that one, it's really not an issue. Um, I heard if we go to blue twenty-nine and, I guess, plus thirty, uh, I heard, uh, staff's position on that, that we would, uh, design and construct all public streets in accordance with the, uh, phasing that was done in the traffic impact study, or how it was set out in the traffic impact study. I guess I would say that it doesn't, apparently, the, the traffic impact study doesn't necessarily align perfectly with our phasing, um, and, and hopefully common sense would prevail here. Um, for example, if you looked at our phase, phase four, for example, um, which is on the far west side of the property next to Pawnee, and not anywhere near High Drive, that we wouldn't be putting in High Drive, uh, if we did phase four. There's no reason for spending money, uh, at, at earlier than we need to. It's already going to be an expensive project, um, and, uh, and the cost to put in High Drive there, it's not needed to serve phase four, wouldn't be something we would want to do, so hopefully, we can work through those issues as we look forward to final plans and so forth. Uh, again, we're, I don't think we're too far off on that, but hopefully, uh, we'll use common sense there. Uh, stipulations, uh, thirty-six and, and thirty-seven, if we could try to talk about those a little bit, even thirty-two, uh, with respect to phasing, thirty-two speaks to the covenants and restrictions. Uh, it, you know, we're going to do, we're going to have a set of covenants and restrictions for the whole property eventually, um, and just like we would do, sort of envision a single-family project, um, where you would have a large plenary plat that would then be developed in phases, uh, you know, uh, you would have a set of declarations prepared for a development like that, uh, but you wouldn't subject the entirety of all the land within the plenary plat to the declarations and covenants, rather, until you're ready to, to develop, and then you add to those covenants and restrictions, uh, you add each phase to those covenants and restrictions, commonly done, always done in our world, and so that's what I was trying to go with there, uh, for thirty-two with respect to the covenants and restrictions, just having done with each phase, but I, we do intend to have all of the phasing, uh, ultimately subject to these covenants and restrictions. Same with thirty-six, or blue thirty-six, which talks about cross-access and parking easement. Um, certainly, we're going to have all that, and talk, I talked with Mark about that, certainly, uh, we're, our intention is to have ultimately the entire prop, property subject to, uh, cross-access and, and parking easements where, where it's, where it makes sense. So we're, we're okay with doing that, but, you know, I don't want to get too bogged down in that language, but the whole point of those changes was to, to do those things in phases, uh, or as needed. Stipulation thirty-seven, old blue thirty-seven, uh, old thirty-eight, um, you know, I think there was some understanding by you, Mr. Chairman, of, as to the term joint and several. I know that, uh, city's legal weighed in on that. We're okay with landowners or property owners, um, being jointly liable. I, I object to the term several. Uh, several liability means, and I think the example was if there's forty-five, uh, home, lot owners, and there's five, I don't know, I don't know, five that aren't really doing their share, that the city has the option of going after, you know, or bringing in or going after the forty-five, or, or whoever. My concern is the way, with joint and several liability, they could decide to pick one of those, only one of those overs out of the forty-five and go after that one owner, and I, I think that's burdensome and unfair, and I'm not, I, I mean, honestly, even though that language has been used for, for, I guess, a long time, I heard decades, it doesn't mean it's right, and we shouldn't do it that way. So I'm okay with it being jointly, just not being joint and several. Um, so, you know, the other things, we're going to have a business association, we're going to have a, a set of declarations that run over the entire property, um, and, and that business association or home association, whatever, however you want to refer to it, just like any other home association, it's going to be used to own and maintain all of the common areas, and each of the, uh, landowners or all the lot owners, anybody who's a property owner will be a member of that association by name, by, just by, because they're an owner, and will, and they will be contributing. There will be a fund, trust me, there will be a funding mechanism within the declaration that requires, uh, of funding for their share of maintenance and ownership and maintenance and repair of common areas. So I don't think we necessarily disagree on that. Um, it'll be done that way, just like it is always and everywhere. But again, we're going to do a, a set of declarations, and, and, um, it'll, it'll be done likely in phases, um, and it'll apply to every lot owner, uh, that, any owner that moves in or any owner of property within our development. So I think we're okay there. Our biggest issue is with regard to the joint and several, uh, liability language, and we still don't like that. Uh, I'll quickly turn to the, uh, public works, uh, stipulations. Try to get to those, we'll be kind of faster on those. I think we talked about phasing, we're going to do the, the roads, uh, in phases, or public improvements in phases as needed, and I guess we can talk about doing them per, per the traffic impact study or doing them for our own phasing, but I think, again, hopefully common sense will prevail, and we'll work through those issues at the time of final You know, the traffic signal, the traffic signal down at one hundred and thirty-fifth street and High Drive, I guess now I understand, uh, what's been said. I, I, I think, you know, i- in our perfect world, we pay the city the money and let the city put it in whenever they want to, because to, to do it the other way that, that's being suggested, that we would build it first, means we have to fully fund it, uh, at the beginning or on our dime, and then we would have to wait to be reimbursed, uh, at some point in the future. It doesn't say here when, but I guess whenever the property owner to the south, um, you know, develops their, develops their, uh, or pays rather, their share of it to the city. So we don't want to be, I guess, in, in our perfect world, we wouldn't want to be on the hook for the entire thing, um, only to wait, wait and, and, until we don't know when, uh, to be reimbursed for it. And, uh, in any event, it seems to me that if we're going to do the traffic signal, it would be done with either, um, I guess, tracks three or four, which would be what looks like phase two on our plan here, when, you know, when, when High Drive's built, is, is that, I guess, the point of that. Um, and then I guess lastly, the one hundred and thirty-fifth street widening, uh, we've talked about that. The, the stipulation as it was redrafted, I, I'll tell you, I, me, it looks probably familiar to you because it's the exact stipulation that was, um, approved for the development immediately to the south. And we felt like, uh, two property owners along one hundred and thirty-fifth street, they each ought to be treated the same, they each ought to be, you know, to be fair, that they each ought to be treated the same. Uh, so I mean, I, that was the reason for that, uh, language and the change. Certainly understand it, it has to be done at some point, uh, but, you know, i- it looks like to me, the property owner to the south with the stipulation here that was approved for them, they never have to pay a dime or a nickel towards one hundred and thirty-fifth street, and that doesn't seem fair to us if we have to. So that was that one. And that's all I have on the stipulations. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have any for me. Um, but I know, I know that, um, Mr. Renear's legal counsel here, Fred, that Fred Logan is here, and would like to also speak to this item, so I would either rest and, or take questions or turn it over to Fred Logan at this point.
All right, Mr. Holland, I think we'll take you up on your op, on your offer to answer questions before we hear from Mr. Logan. Uh, does, do any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Holland on any of his, um, his comments with respect to the stipulations? Commissioner Belzer.
I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Holland or for city staff, but I'm still hearing a big disconnect in terms of phasing and tracks. I hear the developers saying tracks, I mean, phasing, and I hear the city saying tracks, and they're, they don't, they don't match up. So for my own clarification, because that's very confusing to me, um, there's a lot of blue and a lot of red, and a lot of tracks and a lot of phases, and I know that as the city, we're not working on this, um, proposal in phases, it's a tract, and within that tract, all those things need to take place in the way that it's written. Is that correct?
Yes, in, in general, on a couple of them, we are okay as far as using the word tract, because the way that they have the phases is different from what, for instance, the traffic study is, or as far as like, when we were talking about the existing power lines along State Line Road, they have two different phases going along there as opposed to one track, track five, which made more sense, so we're okay with that. Um, with regard to the way that they use phases and other regards with, with regard, for instance, the, um, the deed restrictions, the, um, the shared parking and access, and then also as far as the maintenance, those we're not in agreement with as far as, we're not comfortable, we understand as far as what Mr. Holland is, is saying, however, um, we want to make sure that this is one development. It, it's a mixed-use development, and, and that includes as far as the residential and the commercial, and it's supposed to be integrated, and it's supposed to be working together and walkable and, and those kind of things. So I'm not saying that that isn't the intent of the applicant, but we're concerned that if you stick the word phases in there, that suddenly you might have problems, for instance, when you start doing a cross-access agreement on each plat as it goes across, and you end up having five different plats because they're doing it in phases, ensuring that that cross-access is for the entire development and not get interpreted as far as, oh, it's just for that, that one phase of that development with that plat. And so those are the things that we're not in agreement to, as far as we just have concerns with regard to, to putting in phases.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Klein. Other questions for Mr. Holland? Well, if not, um, I thought I saw Mr. Logan out in the hallway in person, and if so, we welcome him. Uh, Mr. Logan, we've been seeing you on TV for a long time here, so.
Well, I gave that, uh, gave that little, uh, habit up a number of years ago, but thank you for remembering. So. Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Fred Logan, I'm a resident of the city of Leewood, and I am a partner in the law firm of Logan, Logan and Watson in Prairie Village. Uh, I represent Bob Renear, uh, and the Renear family, the owners of the property, and, uh, we want to offer you a little bit different perspective as the owner of the property to broaden, uh, what you've looked at this evening, and what you've looked at this evening is very important. I think it's very important here to go back to the last city council meeting, and the city manager, Scott Lambors, at the end stood up and suggested that there was much, uh, to like in the plan as had been submitted at that time, and he recommended the council that, that it be remanded back to you so that further changes might be made. And Mr. Odo, the developer, has made an extraordinary commitment here over the course of the last ten months. He's been in front of you at least three times, as has Mr. Renear. He came back, he worked extensively with city staff on changes, and those changes are very, very significant, and the staff acknowledges that fact. Uh, in, the staff comments at page two of the report, quote, "The applicant has significantly changed the development plan to better incorporate the principles of the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan." That's what's happened just since the last meeting. This developer, Mr. Odo, has exhibited an extraordinary commitment to the city of Leewood, and an extraordinary commitment on this plan. He's been in front of you at least three or four times, he's been through a number of iterations on this plan, and they've worked very hard with city staff on this plan. From the Renear's perspective, we think this is an extraordinary opportunity for the city. This land has been vacant under the existing zoning since nineteen seventy-five. This is an opportunity to develop over a very large area with one high-quality developer. Mr. Odo has a proven track record of excellent development. That's what you want, that's what the city should want. The alternative, if something like this ends up being turned down, is kind of a piecemeal development over many years, possibly little, little hunks of development here and there by, by developers that come along. This, Mr. Renear suggests, is a great opportunity for the city to work with one developer with a proven track record over a very large tract of land in a very important one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor. The developer has made, uh, many changes to the plan, uh, he's worked with the city, and I was pleased to see in the report that the staff acknowledged that. So we, we submit that you have before you a, a developer with a superb record, that he did what Mr. Lambors suggested to the city council. He came back, he worked extensively with staff, and extensive changes have been made, and that this planning commission should recommend to the city council the approval of the plan. You have this before you. You have a developer, Mr. Odo, with an extensive record of successful, high-quality developments in the area. You have a project that will meet all, will meet all of- developments in the area. You have a project that will meet all, will meet all of the legal requirements of the Leewood Development Ordinance, and that in addition will address many parts and principles of the 135th Street Community Plan, and we, we believe that you should recommend approval. And Mr. Rehneer asks that you recommend approval of this to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Questions for Mr. Logan? Mr. Logan, I have a question for you. You've been doing this for a very long time, and so I'm, I'm really curious to get your perspective on this, this, one of the remaining issues that I think I hear between the staff and the applicant, and that relates to whether certain improvement costs should be incurred across the entire development, or should be incurred in a phased base, on a phased basis, or as my colleague says, there's a little bit of confusion. Seems like sometimes phase and tracks are used interchangeably, and I will admit to my own confusion about that. But it seems to me like we're taking a little bit of the best of both worlds there, that we're getting the benefit from a density perspective and whatnot of a mixed use, but yet when it comes to these other types of issues like the financing of improvements and whatnot, those are really, the applicant wants to treat those more as, doing them as if it was a series, a series of developments from, from west to east. So I'm just curious about your thoughts as a citizen of Leewood, how best we ought to, as a city, deal with and mitigate the risks that come with that kind of phased approach?
Well, I think it's a fair question. I gathered from staff comments earlier, I saw this as possibly moving towards a resolution that, that there would be some different treatment with respect to the commercial development and then the residential development. So I don't think we're talking about four or five different ways. We're talking possibly about a differentiation with respect to the commercial and the residential, and it strikes me as fair because you do not want the residential to be hung up with some commitments that maybe don't work out, but they, they have their own commitments. I, I heard a possible resolution on that that I think would be acceptable to both sides.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Other questions for Mr. Logan? Well, if not, we appreciate your comments and Mr. Rehneer's perspective, and you may step down.
Thank you.
I have to admit that I'm, I'm a little bit flummoxed here about knowing what the applicant and the city have agreed to, the city staff have agreed to with respect to these stipulations and what's still at issue. This is always a dangerous thing to do, but I, I am tempted to take about a 10-minute break and let you folks get on the phone with Mr. Holland and, and Mr. Odo and see if we can actually narrow down to understand just what is an issue and what is not an issue. I don't, don't like to draft during the course of a meeting, but I don't want to spend a bunch of time arguing about stuff that doesn't need to be argued about and then assume that we've got an agreement on some stuff and, or on some issues and then find out there's not an agreement there. Any thoughts, Mr. Klein, on how we ought to proceed?
Actually, staff to get to, to get together, and we discussed as far as the amendments that they are proposing. I did talk with Mr. Holland, let him know the ones that, you know, where I didn't think that we had a disagreement, but maybe terminology and that kind of thing was, was different. I think currently, right now, I think we do kind of know as far as what, what staff at least is willing to agree to, and we, we can let you know as far as why we, we disagree with the applicant as far as some of the changes.
All right. Well, let's, let's go ahead and get your list, and then we'll turn to Mr. Holland and, and get his list, and we'll see how close we are. What, let's focus on the ones that you believe we're, and working from, let's work from Mr. Holland's draft, from Mr. Holland's markup, and identify the stipulations that you think are still at issue.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
I, I just need to make a quick request to Clover Architects user ID. Could you please turn your screen sharing off? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mark, so where, where are we? Yes.
We can't hear.
Try it again.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
The, the original stipulation number four, that's something we're in disagreement too. We do, we are trying to incorporate as far as all the elements of the 135th Street Community Plan, and we've discussed this with the applicant, so that they, they understand that. And basically what it kind of comes down to, and I know that there's been a little bit of talk with regard to, you know, what we're still looking for, and, and what we're looking for is the elements of the plan that have, for instance, like the walkability. I know that we talked about as far as the integration of the density, or integration of uses and how they've integrated some of the uses, and it's true, they've done much better as far as integrating uses than the, the previous plan, but still the vast majority, and I think everybody understands, is way over on the, on the east side of the development, and the rest of it, they do have a little bit, but it, it's not a whole lot. If you look at the 135th Street Community Plan, there's actually two nodes, and they, they talk about nodal development, and they do talk about how it can change depending on, you know, where the market places it and everything, but this particular area going from Mission to State Line Road, there's actually showing a node that Chadwick, and they're also showing a node that's kind of over in that track five, the old airport property or, you know, over by State Line. And so part of the reason why that, that comes a little bit important is that mixed use is supposed to be walkable, and so they usually define that with a kind of a quarter-mile circle that kind of goes around. And if you have the majority of all the, the nodal development, all the, you know, the integration over on the east side, it's much further to walk as far as going across the other way, whereas if you actually have two kind of more major nodes, then you have a little bit more walkability. I do have to give the applicant credit in the fact that, you know, they, they had Chadwick, and if you look at Chadwick, they did provide a nice kind of median there. It's 94 feet in width that actually allows for some gathering. They actually have some small areas as far as where they have as far as commercial that can be used there, as far as, I don't know, for coffee shop or maybe a small restaurant or, or something. And then they also have a kiosk that's located there. It's just that it's not really a whole lot of commercial. They also did integrate a little bit going along on that west side as you're closer to Pawnee, as you're entering off of Pawnee, but again, it's just kind of wrapping some of the buildings, and it's, it's just not as much. So that's kind of where we're, we're a little ways apart as far as on what we feel like the community plan is asking for and what they are, are showing. I know that there was also as far as talking about Main Street development. We are looking for as far as the Main Street development, and probably easiest way to, to do that is just to kind of point to as far as what the 135th Street Community Plan is showing. So on the screen is, is actually a shot of what a destination street within kind of the, the primary nodal part with the commercial is supposed to look like. And if you look at it, it's, it's flanked on both sides of the street with buildings. The sidewalks are wide. It acts as allowing a lot of activity there. The reason why the sidewalks are wide is because if they want to put out as far as some sidewalk cafes, you have the ability to do that. You have some ability to put benches. You have, you know, it just provides a lot more activity or opportunities for activity. Park Place, for instance, when they came in, one of their key components is they wanted to have sidewalks that were about 20 foot in width for that very reason. They wanted to allow as far as that activity on the street. Another thing, so if you kind of compare this, they actually did try and do this on a lot of the areas of the plan, and you have to give them some credit for that and the fact that, you know, you have an area coming off on track five that is coming in off of State Line Road where they did try and line it up. Mr. Odo did indicate that, you know, he'd talked with staff, and originally they had all the buildings pulled up to State Line Road. State Line Road really doesn't provide much of a pedestrian environment, and so they did pull those back and still met the 60-40 rule that, that we've talked about so often. However, they still have some large parking fields that are located in there as well. And if you can kind of compare as far as, I think that Mr. Odo actually had on his slide just before they took it down, one of them, you can kind of see the parking lot on one side, and then you see the, the businesses over on the other. It's, it's a lot different than as far as having it flanked on both sides. And again, they are, there's certain things that they're trying to work against as well as far as on the Leewood Development Ordinance. We do have the requirement that you have a 60-40, so basically 60% of your building area and stuff like that to a depth of 90 feet needs to be up along the public right-of-way. When all of a sudden you have State Line Road and 135th Street, what that does is kind of pulls those buildings toward those, and then it makes it a little more difficult as far as to flank these, these interior streets. So he, he is kind of working as far as kind of in two, two different directions with that. But that, that's one of the reasons why staff has concerns as far as those larger parking fields there, and part of the reason he has that is because he said the grocery store needs that. But again, that's more kind of typical development as opposed to what we're talking about here. We talked a little bit as far as structured parking is another thing that, that kind of comes to mind that Mr. Odo kind of indicated, and we're actually talking about a lot more options than just structured parking. Basically, we're trying to get the parking where we're eliminating those large parking fields. And so if you look at, let me see, I think it's on page 63 of the 135th Street Community Plan, they actually show some different alternatives, and structured parking is one of those. But if you kind of look here, you, it's way of, you know, actually designing the buildings in such a way that maybe you have the parking that's kind of in between. You might have like an alleyway that kind of accesses a parking lot and, and the parking is, is kind of behind, or you may have some teaser parking that's located in front, again, shifting more of the major parking fields to other places. And then here's another one where they actually have the buildings kind of with the, the parking that's located interior. And you do have structured parking, and structured parking is one of the things that it calls for is, again, it's not required, but we're talking about other design elements and not just structured parking that may be able to achieve those, those goals. So that's, that's one of the things that we're still, you know, kind of a little bit apart, apart on. And then I think it was also mentioned as far as single-family, single-family is allowed within the, the 135th Street Community Plan. Pretty much all housing, a mixture of housing, if you can, if you can incorporate them. We actually like the fact that Mr. Odo was, was able to incorporate more different types of housing. If you remember the first, the first plan that he had, within the MXD, it was basically two apartment complexes as far as two different styles, and he still has those two styles, but he's also added the brownstones. He's also added live-work units. He's also added assisted living. He's also added as far as the duplexes that are located there. So it does have much more mix as far as different housing types. And then with regard to the density, I know that that was talked about as well, and on page 51, the, the density that is allowed, the way it's written in the community plan is that by right, you're allowed up, within the T4 district, you're allowed up to four dwelling units per acre. So by right is, is four dwelling units per acre. You can get transfer development rights is what a TDR is. Basically, that is where you take property where you could develop, you take the development that could occur on there, and you transfer it over to another section to create that and let that, allow that to be more dense. But the way it's currently written right now, you can go up to four. It doesn't say that you have to go to four or anything like that. To be fair, there is a section in here as far as where they're talking about recommended densities, and it does say within the T4, the recommended density is 12 dwelling units per acre. And so if you think about the transacts, T4 is up adjacent to 133rd Street, T5 is the next one down, and T6 is the one that's along 135th Street. And so it does allow a lot more. Now, these are higher than what the currently with Development Ordinance allows. Development Ordinance now currently allows 15 dwelling units per acre within MXD. They, they aren't close to that at, at this point, so they're still under the, the LDO as well. So that, I know that was kind of a long explanation, but that's the reason why we don't want to give up on stipulation number four. And Mr. Holland might be able to, I, I think he said that he was okay as far as with original 13D that was located there with regard to the finished, adding finished-in, and he's absolutely correct, that the city code does state finished-floor area. It's just that it defines it a little bit differently than a lot of developers have, have used it, and so we thought it might confuse it a little bit more, and it sounds like he may have been okay with that, and, but, but you can ask, he can confirm that. I think we are still far apart as far as on the 32.
20, 29, you think there's agreement on?
29, I think Mr. Holland kind of indicated as far as the, basically the difference that we have here is that the phasing plan of the traffic study is a lot different than what the phasing plan is that's shown in the plan. The phasing plan that they're showing in the plan actually has five or six different phases that are associated with it. The traffic study is two. It's the one that is basically east of, of Kenneth Road and the one that's west of Kenneth Road. And so I think we're okay as far as using the phasing of the traffic study, but we're not okay as far as using the phasing of the actual plan that they have with the six different phases. The ones that we really are probably not in agreement with are old, are red 33, and this one has to do with as far as the covenants and restrictions.
Mark, if possible, state of the blue for the time being.
Okay, sure. So, so blue 32, staff, again, for the reasons that we stated earlier, we just have a concern as far as if you start putting in with each phase, that that somehow kind of separates that development. I know when I talked to Mr. Holland, he said that that was not their intent, but we're concerned that if that got in there, that it may be unintentional, but it may be more difficult as far as then suddenly you start having a deed restrictions for this type of housing unit here, and then another one for another housing unit, and we want to make sure that it's all one development. The other one is same kind of issue is the cross-access parking easement that we kind of talked about on blue 36. Again, we, we want to make sure that it's a cross-access parking for the entire development. Mr. Holland indicated that that was, be their intent as well, but I'm trying to think how that would work as you plat each one of these in a different phase, and then how you reference future, future phases and, and, you know, so that makes us, makes me a little bit uncomfortable as far as to, to put in phases. And then 37, with all the reasons that the legal department has indicated, you know, and, and we've had the stipulation, like Mr. Holland said, and like we've indicated before, on a number of developments, including mixed-use developments, including Mission Farms, and including Park Place, stretching back for probably at least 20 years. So staff would like to keep that the same.
Mark, on 32 and 36, we, we've had some, at least I think we've had some discussion about feeding all the residential together and the, the commercial on the east, on the east end and separating those. Is that, is that a potential resolution of the concerns on 32 and 36?
I don't, I think staff would still have concerns as far as doing that. Right, right now, again, we want to make sure that this maintains a unified development, and I'm afraid by separating those out, especially on the fly as far as getting the proposal, you know, the night before, and then changing the stipulations at the meeting, that, that would concern me.
Okay. So what I have right now is I have stipulations for 29, 32, 36, and 37 as, as ones that are at issue. Those are all blue, blue numbers. I guess four was actually a red number, but.
Correct.
It's completely deleted. Does that sound right to you?
I, I believe so.
And Mr. Holland's going to get his chance in just a second. What, what about the, on the Public Works memo? Are there, what?
Actually, I think as far as the memo that Mr. Scoville provided, I think that those would be the stipulations and the, what we'd be willing to change. We did email those to, to the applicant, and so he might be able to let us know if he's in agreement with those. It was that one that I handed out, just kind of. It, it was that one that I handed out, just kind of.
I may have missed that one, but that's fine. Everybody else has got, no, no, you're fine. You're fine. Okay. So Mr. Holland. Have we, are we agreeing on what we disagree about or are there other stipulations that are, are at issue that we need to resolve?
I think we are, we're agreeing to disagree. In fact, I'm even more strongly disagree, in disagreement with what Mark just told us or said about his long explanation of why the city wants to keep stipulation number four.
And I agree with that.
I mean, that, that, at the end of the day, if, if, let's just assume you all approve this plan as is. I, I guess I don't know if it's an approval or not, if the stipulation's included. It could mean that this chan, this plan will look complete, could look different, substantially different. If, if what I'm hearing, what he said would be pursued, we wouldn't have an approval. And that's not, and frankly, just it, it, the staff's position is this is what we want to, we want the plan to comply with the 135th Street Community Plan, which, but is not law. So frankly, I think that's, I don't know if I'd say it's illegal, but it sounds, it's, it's very challenging and hard to uphold that, that you could have a, an approval or a denial based on something that's not required by the LDO.
Actually, I would disagree with you on that, Mr. Holland. I think that the, the plan gives us a basis outside of the LDO for setting standards and guidelines for our development, but, but we'll just have to agree to disagree on that. Are there others stipula, are you in agreement that the other four stipulations are the ones we disagree with?
Yeah, I guess I would just make one quick point. This is done all over the place, all the time, even in the city. Paul Brooks, a single development, it's done in phases like this. Declarations, cross-access easements and so forth, those all get done and they are done in phases for the entire development.
Of course, of course, none of those are mixed-use developments, correct?
It doesn't matter. Whether it's mixed use or not, that's, that's a right hearing in my opinion.
In fact, they're not mixed-use developments, are they?
I'm not going to disagree with you in that regard, but I'm not sure how that makes a difference, I guess. The distinction without a difference is, is the way I would view that.
So any other, the other stipulations that, that we need to get resolved?
Well, I mean, I think we're just in disagreement with you on those. Some of those aren't as challenging as others, you know. 32 and 36 maybe aren't as challenging as number four, for example. And 37, I guess I disagree that, we're not, we're not in disagreement on 37, that the plot owners would be jointly liable. I, I guess my, my biggest concern is the term joint and several, severally liable. And I know you know what that means. But just because it's been used time and time again, doesn't mean it's correct. And why should we repeat the same mistake?
All right. So I think we, I think we've kind of figured out where the issues are. At this point, I do think that we'll take a five-minute break for people to stretch their legs here and for you all to stretch your legs at Mr. Otto's office and at Mr. Clover's office. We will reconvene at about eight o'clock or shortly thereafter, at least by my clock in here for the purpose of, of bringing these matters up for discussion with the commission and figuring out how we go, get to resolution. So we'll stand in adjournment. Thanks. All right. The commission will come back to order. We continue to be working on case, you would think I would know it by heart by now. But case number 49-20, Cameron's Court. And we're at that point in the proceedings where we asked the commission for discussion on their thoughts on the plan as it's proposed. I note that it looks like we have at least five stipulations, or not at least, that we have five stipulations that are at issue. And so my thought is that we will have a discussion, including all the issues. But that ultimately I'll ask you all to vote on each of the stipulations before we vote on the plan as a whole. So that's, that's the way I intend to proceed tonight. So with that, I will open up the floor for discussion about Cameron's Court as it stands before us tonight. Comments? This is, this is one of the, and I think I've been here 15 years now and this is probably the second largest project that we've looked at, or maybe the third since I've been on the commission, including Town Center and Park Place. And so I think it probably merits some comment, which I'm sure the governing body will be listening for.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner, please proceed.
I think it's fair to say that a tremendous amount of work has gone into this from the standpoint of the applicant and the staff. And I believe from the planning commission and the governing body. Like everybody's desire is to end up with a fabulous, long-term development that incorporates these 114 acres in the way that the, the city believes is highly viable and at the same time, you know, meets all the requirements and the LDO and the, and the plan for the 135th Street corridor. It feels to me like progress has been made in conversations over these many months as it relates to the applicant and the city coming closer together. But it still feels to me like the, the key components of whether this is truly mixed use and spread appropriately, whether this is too dense, whether this is meeting the desires of some portion or the majority of the, of the citizens that have spoken. It, it feels as though there are many remaining gaps. We've obviously got these four significant stipulations that we may end up resolving. But it does seem a little odd that we're about to vote and we have, you know, significant issues still withstanding. So I am of the opinion that, like was said by one of the citizens during the public hearing a month ago. This is a development that may work in another city on a different piece of land. But this doesn't feel like what was intended or what is desired to the level that would warrant a yes vote from me.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. Appreciate your comments. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Belzer.
I would agree with Commissioner McGurran and I would also like to just point out again and reiterate for a moment that this continues to be a project upon which there is a lot of dissension from the neighboring, from our Leewood citizens. Very loud, very clear and definitive disagreements with this development. And I, while I agree with Mr., with Chairman McGurran, that the applicant has gone to great lengths to work with the city. I, I still feel that the applicant hasn't done enough outreach and listening, like actual listening to the community surrounding and to the Leewood residents. I've never seen feedback, even till, even up to today, we're still receiving emails and comments from the public. And that is a huge concern to me. So I, I agree. I feel like we're still, while lots of progress has been made, we're still, we're still at a disconnect with the phasing, with the tracks, with single family, with even being able to have a clear understanding at this point of precisely what is rent for rent and what is for ownership. And I don't believe that, I don't believe that any of the public that came to speak to us, whether they came by video, through email, or came in person, were saying that ownership equals better neighbors. I don't think that that's the, I don't think that was the message that they were portraying. I think they've spoken very clearly in what they're looking for and I, I just think we're still far apart on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. Before we go on, I just want to make sure, is, is Commissioner Peterson still on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. I couldn't see on my screen, Art. I didn't want to lose my quorum here, so.
Wearing my Zoom shirt so you can see me.
I appreciate that.
Brighten up the, brighten up the meeting a little bit. Well, while I'm speaking, if you don't mind, I'd like to share some of my comments.
Sure.
Frankly, yeah, I, I grew up in Chicago and I have been accustomed to a lot of areas where, like Mr. Otto said, you know, there are, there are people who have, I have known, who have rented apartments all their lives and they've, they've never had any desire whatsoever to live in, in a, in a single-family dwelling. And that's their choice and that's fine. You know, I've also lived in many other cities. I've lived in, in Salzburg, Austria. I've lived in West Berlin when the wall was still up, which is more part of the reasons why in West Berlin, that is one of the classic gated communities on the planet, or was one of the classic communities. You know, but, you know, this project, you know, to me, it, it does seem to meet and provide a great deal of diversity. And you've got duplexes, you've got live-work spaces, which I think is an interesting concept for Leewood. The, the whole issue of, you know, this, the difference between the east side versus the west side of the project. The east side being more commercial and the west side being residential, but there is some integration. And I, I personally cannot see anything west of the Kenneth Road much of the retail. I don't see how it could possibly survive. Because it's basically surrounded by apartments, duplexes, you know, townhomes, whatever. There's not enough traffic to, to stimulate a thriving business, you know, area. Whereas on the east side, that's the more natural location for this. The designs that they've come up with, I think, you know, are very unique and I, I think they're pretty attractive. You know, it's, at some point in time, I, I kind of view it as, I'm not, well, maybe everybody else is, but I'm not getting any younger. And so at some point in time, I would like to, I hate to use the term downsize, and look at not the assisted living portion, believe me, but, you know, maybe an apartment or, or a duplex or something. And I think this would actually provide a, a great value to the city of Leewood. Now, in, in the last meeting, I was, I was rather interested, I believe her name was Jeanette Cox, who worked for Mr. Otto, brought up some information about, you know, the Villa Milano. Well, I, I went through and I researched and took a look at the Johnson County records with respect to Villa Milano. And Villa Milano, you know, her, her data indicated the, you know, there's 4% of the residents, you know, have children who could be, you know, you know, K through 12. Well, you know, on an annual basis for the last five years, Villa Milano has contributed well over $250,000 to the school system. Not, not including, that doesn't have anything to do with the Johnson County Community College, just, just K through 12. And, you know, if you look at the, the few number of, of school-aged students, they, that unit is contributing an enormous amount to our community, of, to our educational system, which is, is, I think, a great value. My wife and I, we have no children. We don't mind paying taxes at all. 50% of our taxes go, Johnson County taxes go to the school system. I think that's wonderful because education is going to be the only way that human society will hopefully, you know, succeed and, and go forward, move forward. This project is going to bring in 944 residential units. Most of the people who buy those townhomes, I buy the duplexes. I, I would be, I wouldn't be surprised that they are basically people who are wanting to downsize but still own a property. And I'm, I'm more than likely, they're going to be maintenance provided, but they're not going to have any kids. So not going to be a burden on the school system. What they did in their design from the very original design is they truly shifted the traffic flow from 133rd Street to 135th and to State, State Line. They shifted it away from the residential communities. It's, will it increase traffic? I'm sure it will. However, but the way they've designed this is I think a big benefit to the, the neighboring residents to the north. And I think in the long run, this will be an enormous benefit to the community of Leewood and to Johnson County, especially the school system. So, you know, I, I, I hope these stipulations can be worked out. I doubt that they can be done so tonight. Because, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not going to be drafting the legal language for this, believe me. However, in looking at what has happened since the very first appearance of the applicant before us, this is the most exciting project I've seen in Leewood in the 25-plus years I've lived in Leewood. And I hope this can be worked out. So if there's some kind of means where we can look at approving it based upon you know, staff and the applicant working through the stipulations and get to some kind of mutual agreement, I would be more than willing to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. We appreciate your comments. Others that wish to be heard on this proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess although I, I do continue to struggle with the, that the new submission is still basically proposing the, you know, two separate developments that are not as fully integrated as what seems it should be for an overall mixed-use development or the mixed-use zoning. But I guess having said that, however, I do think there is a number of significant changes that have been made to the revised plan and the direct improvements, such as the, the removal of the previous gated communities, maintaining the villa buffer, and the attempt to include the, the more of a transect layering for density. The street network with sidewalks is, is connecting now the long development across the entire development property better than the previous plans. The insertion of, I guess, Chadwick Street and the pedestrian connections there is an improvement in the use of the brownstone. Housing units surrounding the public green space seems to really create an important central area and a meaningful place in that part of the development. Also preserving the, the open space just east of Chadwick for the use of the existing large natural tree area is, is really a key improvement. I even think the four-story apartments with the podium-covered parking is an improvement to the west side that creates housing groups that provide amenity areas and more, more open space. that creates housing groups that provide amenity areas and more open space in that area. The eastern tract, I believe, is showing improvements in its layout and design with the midpoint kind of celebrated entry there off of state line, and then also the arrangement of buildings that have now moved in and fronted this north-south Main Street-type arrangement. The, and I guess finally, the maybe the most recent changes to move the residential buildings on the same eastern tract away from the, or move them in and tightening or reducing the surface parking, which has ended up saving more trees and expanding the natural areas, backing those live-work units and the assisted living is also a really beneficial change. And so based on really all these improvements, I would be in supportive of the submission, including all the original stipulations, but could be with amendments to the stipulations based on staff's agreements here through.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Mr. Coleman, you wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank all the residents that showed up on our Zoom calls multiple times and for all the written comments, as we're still getting them for this meeting. I know there's a lot of residents in the area. This is a very, very important development for them and how it impacts their daily lives. And I think I speak for everyone up here. We appreciate your feedback, and we do read the comments and listen to what you say when, during our public hearing portion as well. If I can count correctly, this is the third version that we've seen of this proposal. In addition to the staff comments, I wanted to kind of go upon on that, and I wanted to talk about Mr. Logan, because I think he brought up a very important point, was that he said that the city council wanted to tweak the plan, as there were a lot of good points in the last proposal. And there are still a lot of good points in this proposal as well. But tweaking, I guess we have different definitions between Mr. Logan and myself of what tweaking means. The last proposal had something that everyone agreed upon, and that was the single-family homes that were established as a buffer. And I think Mr. Odo talked about it. We appreciate it, the comments from the public. We're all generally very supportive of that as a buffer, and that's something that I think everyone liked. Taking that, taking that out, I know there's possible reasons for that, but there could be reasons for keeping it in as well, to make this work. So I think that's a step back that we took by removing the single-family homes as a buffer. Other things that concern me is the increase in residential units. This proposal has 32% more residential units. It has a 44% increase in gross building area and a residential density increasing 28%. That in my mind is not tweaking. That is kind of taking a step to higher density within this development that I don't think anyone really wants. I don't think the neighbors want it. I personally don't want to see an increase in density. I'd rather keep it the same or less. The other thing that I struggle with is the east and west sides of the development. The east side, which is commercial primarily, except for the 54 units, and the west side of the development, which is residential. To truly be mixed-use, both, there should be more incorporation on both sides of the development. If not, let's call it what it is. Let's keep the east side of the development, keep it commercial, and zone for commercial, and keep the east side, I'm sorry, and keep the west side zoned as residential or mixed development, if we want to use that in here. I personally have a problem with trying to mix it all together when it doesn't really, it's tough to mix those two different parcels together. They are separate. Even though they are, have the same ownership and a small sliver of land trying to connect it. So with that, I feel very, I feel the residents and their feedback and their continuous feedback on this. And under this latest proposal, I still am not supporting this proposal. I still think that there's a lot that needs to be, to be done to make it viable for us and for the residents of Leewood.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Appreciate that.
I'll add, I'll add some comments. I share Commissioner Coleman's concern about this most recent version of the plan. I agree. I was surprised and disappointed to see the single-family residential be removed from the plan. That was one thing, as Commissioner Coleman said, that it seemed like the public was generally supportive of. And it was consistent with the idea of a layering approach to, as we move from the north to, or yeah, from the north to the south to 135th Street. And I too had done the math, as Commissioner Coleman did, to see just how much of an increase there was in effective density as a result of this, of this most recent plan. You know, having said that, again, I think there is a lot to be said for this plan. Not with saying the fact that we lost the residential piece. The, but I continue to remain concerned about the density, the population density, the residential density on the, on the western portion of it. The other thing that I am really concerned about, that we really haven't touched much in the discussion here, and hopefully this will engender some additional discussion, and that is stipulation four. Because I feel the applicant's pain in a major way, that leaving stipulation four leaves a great deal of vagueness as to what this, this plan will ultimately look like. And as I indicated in some of my exchange with the applicant's attorney, I certainly think that it's within the realm of what the commission can do. That's part of what a comprehensive plan and a community plan is all about, is to set the standards beyond what the LDO is, as to what we're going to do. And so I certainly think it is within the scope of what we do as a commission and what the city council does as a governing body and what the staff does to insist on the standards in that community plan if we think that it's the thing to do. On the other hand, as I say, I have great sympathy for Mr. Odo and Mr. Holland in putting together, trying to move forward on a proposal that we would either recommend for or against, that says, well, there's still a very broad, vague compliance with 135th Street Plan that they have to go through before they can ultimately get approval and move forward with the construction. So I'm really torn on that issue. I think that, at least on that particular issue with respect to stipulation four, while I generally agree with the city staff's approach about some of the elements of the 135th Street Plan that aren't in this, I think that if we're going to push forward a plan, even with a negative recommendation to the city council for consideration, I think that Mr. Odo is entitled to some certainty with respect to what's supposed, what's going to be in there and what's not. So that, that particular stipulation I've struggled with. With respect to stipulations 29, 32, and 36, you know, I agree with Commissioner Stevens that I think that the applicant's position with respect to 29, 32, and 36, and their insistence that those need to be phased and the comparison to a number of other developments around the city belies the fact that this maybe isn't really mixed-use, that this is the mixed-use label, but the actual application is not mixed-use. Because certainly, they are unwilling to contemplate that stipulations with respect to covenants that run with the land and whatnot ought not to be applied across the board, that they ought to be applied for the, for the commercial part when it comes up, and again, later on for, in a different fashion, at a different time for the residential. If this is truly a single mixed-use development, it only makes sense that those types of things around the improvements and the covenants would apply across the board. And so to me, that belies the idea that this is truly a mixed-use. But on the other hand, I'll say, what's in a name? I mean, we have a wonderful opportunity with a piece of property there, and as I say, with notwithstanding my trepidation with respect to the density, this, this plan does have a whole lot to recommend it. But if it's a mixed-use plan, it ought to be treated as a mixed-use plan. With respect to stipulation 37, I am, I am truly struggling with that one. I understand that it's been a standard stipulation that we've used for years and years, but as Mr. Holland says, just because we've used it for years and years doesn't necessarily mean that it's right to be used now. So I'm not persuaded by that argument that it's been in so many other plans or proposals that have been done over the years. It does give me a little pause for concern, at least my understanding of literally what joint and several liability means is that any one landowner could be held responsible for the entirety of the obligation, and then it's up to them to go get contributions. And that's not as big a concern if you've got 35 out of 37. I absolutely agree with that. But if you, if you find one deep pocket, if the city finds one deep pocket to hit, I think there's certainly a fairness factor of hitting that deep pocket and then making the deep pocket deal with all the others that would have liability as well, the joint liability. But on the other hand, I totally understand the city's perspective, that the city ought not be in the position of chasing, you know, 35, 40, 60, whatever the number of owners are, to each one get their share. So that one, I remain, I remain in a little bit of a conundrum on. But overall, I am, I am really waffling. I'm on the fence as to whether I would support the plan or not. I think that I probably would support it with the, with the exception that I would probably support the idea of striking stipulation four and having the plan go up or down with the city council as it stands today. But leaving stipulations 29, 32, 36, and 37 as they stand, as they stood with the city's, city staff's drafting. So that's a pretty long-winded statement, but those are at least my thoughts. Any other comments on the stipulations, and particularly whether we ought to be including a stipulation that requires adherence to the 135th Street Plan without specifics? That's the one I'm really curious as to what others think about that, because I'm struggling with it. Commissioner Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, this is a question for staff, because obviously this is not the first development that we've seen on 135th Street. Is that stipulation in all the other developments that we've put forth?
No, I mean, actually, the other one that I'm thinking of is Lashbrook Property, that was just to the south of this one. And so that one came with a formal recommendation from staff of denial. So that, that's the reason why it wasn't included there. Now, it actually did end up getting approved. City council actually overrode and the planning commission and approved that project, so it came forth. And so as far as some of the other ones, we really haven't had a whole lot that have actually started from scratch with the 135th Street Community Plan. Cornerstone had already started. Parkway Plaza had already started. You know, we had as far as the piece that Mr. Simpson was trying to come in on and having the Velagio development and stuff like that, but that didn't meet the 135th Street, and staff wasn't supportive of that one, and so had a recommendation of denial on that one. So this one, you know, again, staff felt like this one actually came closer to actually meeting the 135th Street Community Plan than pretty much anything we've seen. They actually did put in a grid network, and they had to deal with as far as Covenant Chapel kind of extending so far to the south and really bisecting that. Otherwise, I think they probably would have put in, you know, another cross-street east-west going over that would more directly tie. But unfortunately, they, they had to kind of turn it down. But they did create a grid system with this. They did try and integrate the development, and staff's had numerous conversations as far as indicating that, you know, we'd like to see more integration and more on the, on the west side. And the applicant's been very upfront with saying, stating that he didn't feel like the market would support that, and so he was not going to do that. So, I mean, we've had a number of discussions, and we've just reached a point to where, you know, we think that they've done quite a few of the things as far as the 135th Street Community Plan. They really have. It's just that, you know, the items that I mentioned before is what staff was looking forward to see if there is a way to increase that.
Mr. McGurran, you looked a minute ago like you might have a comment.
Thank you. I think that your comment about stipulation four feels accurate to me also in the sense that it's so broad that if it, if there were five specifics out of the plan that we still wanted them to comply to, I think we'd have five listed there. And it seems like that would be potentially more fair to have made that clear. Now, you probably made that clear months and months and months ago, and we've made progress, but it's still there for the reasons you referenced, and I completely get that. But I would have no problem if we, I think we should vote tonight, and I think this should be obvious where we stand. But if, you know, weeks ago or months ago, we had said we need to break that down into specific components and list them, and then they can address that or choose not to, that might have been, you know, less cumbersome and more specific to the route that we needed to get. I think, like a lot of the people that came through the public hearing said, there's all kinds of things about this, whether it's the density, whether it's the changes that were made, whether it's the lack of true mixed-use. I think there's all kinds of things that, some progress has been made on, but it's still not where almost anybody thinks it should be. That's my general opinion. So I wouldn't have a problem with four being stricken and the other ones being left in. And I'd question whether the word, the last reference to severely liable, if we struck the last two words and left it joint, I don't know from a legal standpoint if that, if that makes it more palatable or not. But I get your point. I mean, if somebody with substantial amount of money was sitting there, they, any entity would be going after that person. Kind of like, you know, other tragedies occurred, and they go after the insurance companies, and then when the insurance companies don't have enough money, they go after whoever has the deep pockets, wherever that organization or entity is, and that can be unfortunate.
And I will say, in fairness to staff, I am fairly confident, based on all of the various hearings that we've had, that staff has consistently taken its position with respect to those four or five bullet points that were in the report that kind of all fall under stipulation four. And again, we heard tonight that the applicant appeared to have absolutely no interest in adopting those four or five bullet points out there. So I, again, I don't want to suggest that staff was playing hide the ball or did anything but was forthright with those three or four bullet points. And this was a way of putting a stipulation in that protected staff's position with respect to those four bullet points. So I truly understand and appreciate that. Other comments? Commissioner Belzer?
Also goes back to what we've been tossing around for many months about the 135th Street Plan and needing to have a really thoughtful discussion about what does it mean in today's terms? Where do we stand on it? about what does it mean in today's terms, where do we stand on it, where does the governing bodies stand, where do these developers stand, and have a real conversation that might be able to tighten up the language that comes in as stipulation number four.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, it looks like perhaps, from the looks I'm getting around the table, and I can't quite see Mr. Peterson again, but the, I think that perhaps we're at a place where we ought to consider voting on these stipulations, then ultimately get to a vote on a plan, but I think we owe it to both the applicant and the city, to the governing body, to at least give them our views on these stipulations that wish the staff and the applicant have not been able to come to agreement on. So, perhaps if anyone would want to offer a motion either to leave stipulation four or to remove stipulation four from what we move on to the governing body, I'm all ears for a motion.
Can I ask a clarifying question of staff?
Absolutely.
If we were to do that, if we were to remove four, is that precedent-setting in a way that would be unfortunate, or is its removal, in a sense, possibly okay, because to the point I think the chairman made, other items, those five things I mentioned, might already all be referenced in other stipulations?
I think as far as there's been a lot of discussion on the record, and so I think you've made it clear as far as kind of where you're coming from and the reason for that. Again, staff was doing it for the very reason that, it was difficult to put together as far as A, B, C, D, just because a lot of it was so much as far as design, could have used structured parking, could have used teaser parking, could have used, you know, there's a lot of design elements in there. And I think ultimately, the city council is the one that, you know, will actually take a look at this and decide as far as what to do. So, I think as far as, obviously, staff put it in there for a reason, and we'd like to see it stay, but I think that I understand as far as where the planning commission's coming from.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess related to this, when you were describing a number of the issues that kind of related to the stipulation number four, and the importance and the good attributes about those, and I can't quite remember if it's the exact same five, but in the staff report on page twelve, there's five bullets that I think are maybe referencing what staff would like to see in relationship to better intent of the Hundred and Thirty-Fifth Plan.
That was certainly my thought, too.
Yeah, that might be a way to incorporate those five versus the more subjective comment of just number, or stipulation four. I don't know if that helps with this.
And actually, staff would be a part of doing that.
Again, I know that the applicant would be opposed to that, but that's something for the applicant to take up with the city council, with the governing body at the time they consider it. So, that would be another option, rather than just saying yes or no to stipulation four, to modifying stipulation four to include those five bullet points.
And then, I guess you could vote on those five.
Yeah, I probably would hope that we wouldn't vote on each one of the five individually. I'd stretch myself to vote on five as stipulations, but it's whatever the commission wants. I'll hang with you on however you want to proceed.
Do you want me to give it a try?
I would be very interested in you giving it a try.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for denial of Cameron's Court, request for approval of a rezoning from AG Agricultural and SD-0 Planned Office to Mixed Use District, Preliminary Plan and Preliminary Platte located south of Hundred and Thirty-third Street and west of State Line Road, case forty-nine twenty, as written with the following stipulation enhancements. So, the removal of the red four, the reference that Commissioner Stevens made is to the five stipulations that are on page twelve.
Twelve.
The inserted.
In place, so that would be stipulation four.
In place of four, red four. And then, if I remember correctly, on twelve C, we were going to reference that this was for track five, the frontage along State Line Road. We were going to reference in blue twenty-nine that this would follow the traffic study plan, the two phases of the traffic study plan. And then, thirty-two and thirty-six would remain as written.
By staff.
By staff, correct. And thirty-seven would also remain as written by staff.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. So, moved by Commissioner McGurran, seconded by Commissioner Belzer. Discussion on the motion. And make sure I follow, this was a recommended denial or approval?
Correct.
Denial.
Denial.
Okay.
I guess there was also a noted removal of stipulation number six in the blue stipulation.
A fair point. That's a fair point. The original seven are blue six. We agreed earlier to remove because it had already been satisfied. Thank you.
Fair point. Any discussion on the pending motion? Okay, I think, I'm looking at staff to make sure they've got the motion, because it's one of our more complex ones. Ms. Knight?
I didn't catch it. This is Marcy with Legal. On number blue twenty-nine, the only thing I caught was that I think the language used was follow the traffic study plan, and I think the change to that was to follow the phasing of the traffic study.
Yeah, the way I remember it was that there were two phases in the traffic plan, and we would follow that logic instead of the six phases or the five tracks.
Yes, I just, I only heard plan, not phase, so I just wanted to make sure that traffic phases.
Thank you.
I think on stipulation number twenty-nine, we also wanted to change it from public streets to public improvements.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, any discussion? So, the motion pending, I'll just give it the highlight, the motion pending is to recommend case number forty-nine twenty to the governing body for denial, but with those modifications to the stipulations. Everybody understand where we're headed, then? All right. Let's go ahead and just, and do the vote by hands, and I can, hopefully, I'll be able to see Art's hands on the screen as well. So, those in favor of recommending case number forty-nine twenty to the governing body for denial, please indicate by raising your hand. I have aye votes from Commissioner McGurran, Commissioner Belzer, and Commissioner Coleman. Those of...
Art had his aye.
Art did, I missed it, so Art, and Art's hand was up for denial?
No, it's a thumbs up for denial.
For denial, okay, so thank you for denial. Those in favor, I mean, those opposed to recommending denial to the governing body, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is Commissioner Stevens, I believe. So, on a four-to-one vote, case number forty-nine twenty is recommended to the governing body for denial. And again, many thanks to all the residents of Leewood who made their feelings known, many thanks to the many hours that staff has put into this, and many thanks to the applicant and their attorneys, as well as Mr. Rainier and his attorney, and this should provide for an interesting discussion at the governing body here in the future. That moves us to new business at ten till nine. The commission calls case number eighty-two-one, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section sixteen-two-dash-ten-point-three, materials and colors, request for approval of an amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to standards for laminated composite shingles, including required minimum weights. Mr. Klein, do you have a presentation this evening?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this is an application for a Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section sixteen-two-dash-ten-point-three, which deals with single-family roofing. As you recall, we've done a couple of amendments now with regard to single-family roofing. One of them had to do as far as with the color, allowing darker colors to be added to the list, and then another one was as far as adding as far as solar roofs to the roofing availability as well. This one is another change, and I apologize, the reason why this one is coming to you separately is staff is actually, has a number of applications that are pending, and we're trying to respond to those, but we also felt like we had to do the research necessary to actually come forward to the planning commission and city council to make a recommendation, and so we didn't want to rush certain parts of it. And so, this one actually is kind of one of the bigger issues, and over the years, essentially, the roofing materials for single-family asphalt shingles, laminated composite shingles have actually decreased substantially in weight. And so, what we're finding is that not only are a lot of the applications that we're getting not meeting those weight requirements, and so we're starting to deny those applications, but we're also finding out from some of the manufacturers that some of the existing materials that we have on there have also been lowered in weight, and we just didn't know it, and so they no longer meet as well. And the difference in weight, and we've talked to probably almost all of the major manufacturers of the roofing material, we've talked to some roofing contractors, and we've talked to developers to try and get a sense as far as, you know, kind of what's going on, and a little bit of different stories as far as their perspectives that they had, but essentially, across the board, they all agreed that although the weight has gotten lighter, the quality of the roof has actually gotten better, and that's due to improvements in technology. And for instance, one of the reasons that I heard that, one of the reasons why it was heavier at one point is for wind resistance, make the shingles heavier on the roof, takes more wind to blow them off. Well, they've improved as far as the sealant that actually holds the shingles together, so they don't need that anymore. And so, some of them have taken out sand out of the product that made them heavier, some of them have taken out as far as some of the granules that were located under the underlap that was there, and so there's been a couple of different reasons why that's gone on. In addition, you have as far as your class-four impact-rated shingles, and they can be fallen into two categories. One is kind of with a fiberglass mat that's part of it, but a lot of them are also using a rubberized material called SBS. And not only does the SBS hold up better as far as the impact rating, it also evidently holds the granules much tighter to the roofing material as well. So, what staff is actually proposing on this one is that we change as far as the roofing weight from the two-hundred and, from the two-hundred pounds, well, actually, we divided it into two, I'm sorry. What we are left with after the quality issue is aesthetics, and so really, what that came down to is, you know, originally, I think that the aesthetics and the weight were actually related, so the thought was heavier the shingle, the thicker the shingle, the more depth the shingle had, the more it looked like a wood roof. Now that that hasn't, you know, the weights have kind of come down, we kind of broke it down into two categories. One is a shadow line, a lot of them have a shadow line that goes underneath to actually replicate that depth, and so on those roofing materials, we're suggesting that the weight be allowed to drop down to two-hundred pounds per square, as opposed to the three-hundred pounds per square or the two-hundred-and-sixty-five pounds per square that we currently have for standard shingles and then the impact-rated shingles. There are a couple of shingles out there that actually do not have a shadow line, they're actually much heavier, and they typically don't have a problem at all as far as with that three-hundred pounds per square. In fact, a lot of them are up closer to four-hundred pounds per square, and the reason why that they kind of, they kind of create that shadow line themselves, just because of the thickness of the roofing material that's there. And so, those roofing materials, we are suggesting that they actually keep the three-hundred pounds per square if they don't have a shadow line. If they do have a shadow line, they're allowed to drop the thickness or drop the weight. We also kind of reduce the thickness or change the thickness a little bit. Currently, right now, it's said minimum of three-sixteenths at the butt end. We went out, we got a little caliper thing, so we could actually start measuring these, started measuring some of the ones that are on the roof, and practically, none of them have a minimum of three-sixteenths at the butt end. And what we found is that a lot of them, you know, parts of the roof will be one ply, parts of the roof will be two ply, parts of the roof will be three ply. The one ply doesn't meet it at all, the two ply, some of them come close, some of them are actually meet it, and the three ply, they all exceed it, and so we changed that to an average, and so that way, we still kept the three-sixteenths at the butt end, but it's more of an average as far as all those different plies that are located there. Staff is recommending approval of this application, and will be happy to answer any questions, and I actually do have a couple of samples, so you can kind of see the shadow lines.
Thank you, Mark. While you're showing those, on a point of order, I would accept a motion to extend our meeting by thirty minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move to extend our meeting for additional thirty minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the meeting is extended to nine-thirty. Please proceed, Mr. Klein.
I put out two shingles, so you can kind of take a look as far as, and they each have a shadow line. The shadow line is that darker band that kind of goes underneath the shingle, again, to make it create more depth. The one on the left actually does not meet, it's actually closer to the two-hundred pounds per square that we currently have, and the one on the right is actually approved and meets our weight requirements. And so, staff did go out and look as far as the different roofing materials. We asked each of the manufacturers to give us a list of the roofs that actually meet the weight requirement, and a list of the roofs that don't meet the weight requirement, so we could actually go out and kind of compare the two, and it was more than just me, all, everybody on the staff actually went out, so it wasn't just one person's opinion. We felt like, you know, up on the roof, actually, we couldn't tell the difference, and so, again, staff is recommending approval of the amendment.
Questions for Mr. Klein. Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Klein, I'm a little confused on the use of average thickness, going from minimum to average. I know, I think in your presentation, you were talking the average thickness of all the shingles on a roof as opposed to just one shingle.
And actually, what we're really talking about is, and I'll bring up a sample, so you can kind of see what I'm talking about, is that you basically, it would be an average as far as the single ply, the two ply, and the three ply, and if all three of them averaged the thickness together, and they met the average of three-sixteenths at the butt end, we wouldn't be trying to measure every single shingle, because, I mean, we couldn't do that, especially when out on the roof, there's way too many, and alls we get is a sample, but basically, the intent was just to take the one ply, the two ply, the three ply, and if they had a four ply, then we'd use it as well. But let me bring this up to you, and so you can actually kind of see what we're talking about.
My concern is, is the way it's worded now, I mean, I'm not in the business of roofing, so I don't know, but is that sufficient to give guidance for contractors to understand that, when you say must have an average thickness as opposed to minimum?
I think it's something that we could, it would be something that we'd have to explain as far as how we take the measurement.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And so, those are occurring on one band of shingle, or, yeah, so it's not an average over the entire roof, it's an average of the...
...as far as the thickness, and unfortunately, we don't really have a way to tell as far as the number of, you know, that are in the row or the band across the house, or some examples that they give us to kind of get a feel as far as what kind of thickness it is.
Can you show it to the right-hand side?
Which one doesn't meet three sixteenths average? The one ply?
The one ply, yeah.
One ply does not, do the two plies usually?
Well, there's two plies, some of them have, and some of them are usually close, but I've had some of them just under.
Okay.
Two plies also.
Okay.
Which one doesn't meet three sixteenths average? The one ply?
The one ply, yeah.
One ply does not, do the two plies usually?
Well, there's two plies, some of them have, and some of them are usually close, but I've had some of them just under.
Okay.
Two plies also.
Okay.
of the manufacturers that basically, we're talking pounds per square. So a square is 10 foot by 10 foot, it's 100 square feet. And so you take that weight, and you disperse it over 100 square feet, and again, they all pretty much told us that it probably is going to be pretty difficult to tell if any difference in the weight.
So, Mark, a couple of questions. It's the unit of measurement that I'm struggling with a little bit. When it says in seven, that must be a minimum of 300 pounds per square, what...
Per square is that roofing term? And it's always been kind of part of this ordinance, and basically, it's 10 foot by 10 foot, that's 100 square foot. And so when somebody comes to your house, they'll measure as far as how many squares it will take to cover your roof.
So this would require for a 10 by 10 square, that the aggregate of the shingles weigh 300 pounds?
Correct. And it used to be that they all published, this used to be simple to find out. Now, only a couple of them, certainty, actually, you can go to the website, and you can find those out. Most of the rest of them, it's nowhere to be found. A couple of them, if you contact them, they'll send you a letter indicating what it is, and some of the other ones, it's even a little bit more difficult than that.
So the thing I'm struggling a little bit with is it's not intuitive to me that the shadow line should be the defining criteria for whether it's 300 pounds or 200 and, or 200 pounds. In fact, it almost seems it ought to be the other way, because, as you say, it sounds like usually the ones that are, have shadow lines are lighter anyway, which would be the ones that would be more susceptible to failing.
Well, and actually, as far as failing, they're all good roofs. I mean, pretty much everybody we have talked to have indicated that if you have a roof now versus a roof that you got 20 years ago, and even if it was much heavier, the roof now is going to be much better performing. So as far as quality wise, we were pretty much told by everybody that quality part of it, I think, we're okay on. They've actually increased beyond as far as what we used to allow. The part that staff was really kind of struggling with was as far as, okay, how do we make sure the aesthetics are there? And so the reason why we use the shadow line is that the shadow, if you had a roofing material without a shadow line, and it didn't meet that weight requirement, and it was much thinner, it would look very, very flat. But the fact that they put that shadow line on there is kind of an artificial way that they try and add depth. And the development ordinance has always referred to shadow lines, it's always been as far as one of the requirements unless their thickness creates that shadow line itself. So we're trying to stay in line with what we've always had. It just felt, staff was looking for, you know, a way to say, okay, the lighter material, if it's lighter, how do I still make sure that it has that look of depth? And about the only thing we could come up with is that shadow line, whereas if you had a roofing material that didn't have that shadow line, and it didn't meet the weight requirements, then we're afraid that that's really going to look flat.
So it's really not that the shadow line is driving the weight, it's that the weight is how you get a shadow line. So if you have, if you have 300 pound square, that's going to give you the shadow line you're looking for, whereas if there's an artificial shadow line, 200 pounds will give you that same thing. So really, the weight's driving the shadow line.
To a certain extent, yeah, because the weight can also, not only can it be sand, and not only can it be granules, it can also be asphalt. And if you have a lot more asphalt on it, it's going to be thicker, and it does kind of create more of a shadow line to it. And like I said, a lot of times, those are 400 pounds plus. So the 300 pounds per square doesn't seem like it's really an issue.
Commissioner McGurran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Klein, is, are we aware of other cities that have already made this transition, because so many of the manufacturers have stopped communicating the previous detail?
You know, we haven't really found a whole lot of cities that regulate the roofing the way that we do. I think Leewood actually, originally when this came through, Leewood allowed all wood roofs, and we didn't allow any asphalt. And so when asphalt was allowed to come in, Leewood had a certain look, it had the wood roofs. And so the city had the interest as far as, well, we don't want to allow something that kind of changes the whole image, and so we're only going to allow weathered wood as far as the color, and we're only going to allow, you know, 300 pounds per square, which is what it originally was at. And we're going to require that shadow line, and they're doing everything that they could to make it imitate as far as a wood roof as much as possible.
Any other questions for Mr. Klein? If not, because this is a modification or an amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance, a public hearing is in order, and with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that wishes to be heard? If not...
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Coleman?
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. Those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. Takes us to discussion and hopefully a motion with respect to case number 8021. Thoughts? Or a motion?
Chairman?
Commissioner Coleman?
I move approval of case 80-20, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-10.3 Materials and Colors, request for approval of an amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to standards for laminated composite shingles, including required minimum weights.
Thank you, and I may have misunderstood, just to clarify, it's case number 80-21. You may have said 8020, or I may have misunderstood it, so just to be clear.
8021.
Okay. Is there, and I guess I, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stevens, any discussion? Those in favor of recommending case number 80-21 to the governing body for approval, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and case number 80-21 is recommended to the governing body for approval. Is there any additional business to come before the commission this evening? Commissioner Coleman?
I just had a question for Mr. Klein. With the condominiums in Sunrise, and the problems that they've been having in Miami with a pedestrian bridge crumbling down a couple of years ago, just made me think about the process here in Leewood. Do we do anything after the fact? I mean, we do a ton of work for planning purposes ahead of time, but do we do any follow-up once the building is up and established?
I would have to double-check as far as with building to see if there's, I know they have to meet building permits and building codes and all that kind of stuff at the time of construction. I know that we have maintenance codes as far as that they be maintained, so if something's falling apart, then that might draw your attention to something might be, might not be right, that might be possible. I don't know if we go out and actually do a structural follow-up afterward. I don't think so, but I don't know that for sure.
Just in listening and reading, you know, obviously, it piqued my interest, not only from a personal perspective of what's going on, but also from a planning commission perspective. They did mention that there's a 40-year review that these buildings have to go through. So I didn't know if we had anything concrete that we did.
And I'll check.
Okay. Thanks.
Mark, why don't we, why don't we put that on the list for a work session, whenever we have the next work session? It wouldn't have to be a long item, but it would be worth exploring in greater detail in a work session.
Sure.
Work session, is, when will be an appropriate time to schedule a joint work session with the governing body to talk about?
That's really something that the governing body gets to decide, is we don't have the ability to call a joint work session. They have discussed it in the past. This is just my own personal observation from watching some of the videos. I don't think there's a consensus at the city council, at the governing body, about revisiting the plan, for what it's worth category. Now, we will have a chance to revisit it. When does the comprehensive plan come up for review?
The comprehensive plan is something that we want to update this year. Obviously, we have the 2020 census, so we wanted to make sure that we have the final numbers, but we also want, it'll be this year.
So, and this is part of our comprehensive plan, so it will be, at least for us, to discuss and give our thoughts to the governing body. And as part of that, and I've gone on record a couple of times, but I'll reiterate again, it's my hope that we will extend invitations, specific invitations to developer, the development community in Leewood to participate in that process, because we've heard so much in the way of concern from that community about our comprehensive plan. We want to give them every opportunity to participate, so that they can participate at that pro, at that stage, rather than when they have a proposal come before us and then tell us that our plan is inadequate. So we'll see if that works.
And a lot of them have been there, they just choose to not give us feedback.
And I recall late last year, that discussion coming up with the council and the city manager saying they were going to put it as a work session item. They just, they haven't gotten to it, and I remember several means ago asking Mr. Klein if we could do it. He said, no, the city council has to do it, so I don't know where they are.
Well, and it's come up a couple of times in city council meetings since late last year, where it just kind of gets pushed off. So, because it came up, and as I recall, it came up in the context of one of their discussions about Cameron's Court, as to whether or not they should...
It would definitely be helpful to us.
All right, anything else? If not, thank you all for all of your consideration. It's one of the difficult, most difficult things that we've done, is to try to keep the issues in mind over multiple months. And you all did an exceptional job of keeping the issues in mind, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel each time that came up before us. And I wouldn't be surprised if we see it again sometime in the future, so.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing. I would just like to commend staff for keeping us informed with everything going on, not only with the packets that we get every time there's revision with Cameron Courts, but it's definitely, you know, I appreciate your efforts in compiling all this data, every single meeting, all the changes, and also the comments from the general public, and getting those to us before the meeting to give us enough time to digest them before we get to get to this room. So thank you.
All right, we stand in adjournment. Yes, ma'am.